Good evening. This is the Ashland School Committee meeting for February 2nd, 2023. We start by reading our vision statement, which is the Ashland Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. We'll start just by reviewing the order of business for the evening. We've called the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Reviewing our opening procedures, we'll first have public comment and administrative items, including the Student Advisory Council presentations, approval of another therapy dog at the high school, community service presentation, a discussion of our five-year capital plan, a mid-cycle update from the superintendent on his goals. We'll take up the issue of the accept collaborative vote to include the Wayland Public Schools, of an assistant superintendent's update. We will have warrant articles, I assume, from Mr. Kendall. Under consent items, we'll be approving the minutes from January 5, 2022, gifts and donations. We'll have member updates and then any other action items. Start by just having, calling the roll and asking everybody if they're okay with that order of business. Let's start with Paul.
Yes.
Okay, so we can, we can talk about that.
So it's supposed to come for us, but still let, still do that.
Okay.
Here and yes.
Aaron?
Here and yes.
Okay, and Ms. Tosti is on camera tonight.
I'm here, and yes, thank you.
Thanks, sorry. And here and yes for me. So we'll start by asking if there is anyone who'd like to make a public comment, and if so, please come to the microphone. I don't see anybody online either. Okay, so no one for public comment. Then let's move to the Student Advisory Council presentations. And I believe we have some students here who'd like to come to the microphone, or at least will. Please start by introducing yourselves, if you would.
Hi, I'm April.
April.
Good to see you again. So recently, I think most of you know this because it was presented here, but Superintendent Jim Adams awarded three high-achieving seniors with awards for academic excellence. Also, seniors are done with their college applications, and many people are receiving acceptance letters from schools with early-enrolling decisions, which is really exciting. We're also, we're now focusing on applying for scholarships and looking forward to more decisions. For some events, last night, the Student Council hosted Game Show Night, which is an interactive and fun event for all high school students, where we played Family Feud, bought it in like Minute's Win of Games for prizes. And then after a month of hard months of hard work, the Ashland Theater Department will be putting on their annual musical on March 3rd, 4th, and 5th this year. They'll be performing Mama Mia, which is a romantic comedy about love, family, and friendships. Tickets can be purchased on the AHSTS website, and this is really exciting since they have not had a musical in like several years.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ragvid. So first thing I would like to start off is with the midterm exams. So the midterm week from the 23rd to the 27th was successful. There were no complaints regarding exam efficiency or confusion about the weightage of the exams. On top of that, the teachers did well in like informing their students about the content of the exams and providing adequate resources to study for them. And one more thing I'd like to talk about is Flag Day. So Flag Day will take place tomorrow, February 3rd, and it was an event started by the AHS Cultural Student Union last year to attempt further inclusion of the diverse backgrounds in the high school. So how it works is that a few students represent a flag that they feel most connected to in a school-wide assembly, which could resemble their origins, their birthplace, their nationality, et cetera. And after a successful run last year, and the fact that we're holding it again this year, it is very likely that Flag Day will be hosted annually, thus bringing further community, thus bringing the school community further together. So the last thing I would like to talk about is the junior seminars. So the junior seminars began in the winter, and information regarding colleges and standardized testing is being provided on a weekly basis. And although it has come to a halt in the past few weeks, it will resume in the spring as juniors get prepared for upcoming standardized tests like the SAT, and eventually college applications in their senior year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adam. Sport, winter sports, the season's coming to an end soon. Many of the teams have done well. There's one track athlete that qualified for All States, several swim athletes qualified for States, and they did very well at the TVL showcase. Wrestling won the TVL, and both hockey teams are currently in the playoffs right now. The Clocker Club is hosting their Pancake Breakfast on February 12th. It's going to be the first in-person Pancake Breakfast in a few years due to COVID. And the Make-A-Wish Club is hosting a Twister tournament and game tournament on February 5th, where it's $5 and people can participate in Twister and Bounce House Tournament.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions for, for any of our students?
It's nice to see the flag, the flag, if you can come back.
Yep.
If you're ever.
If you're ever at the middle school and you see the flags, they're there. That happened every year back when that was the high school, and it was a big deal then, and so it's so nice that it's happening again.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming in, and you're welcome to stay, but we know you got homework and other things to do, so if you want to, excuse yourself, you're welcome to. Thanks, have a good night. Next item on the agenda is approval or discussion about the therapy dog at AHS.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start again. Sorry I'm not there for struggling through the COVID year myself, but as Paul started stating, the policy actually just states that it's the approval of the superintendent, but I, we've got to present the therapy, in-house therapy team to the school committee before I can make the approval. And Davina is there, and Kelly, if you want to introduce Davina and, and go from there, it'd be great.
Sure. So I'm very excited to introduce Davina McNaney and Bam. Davina is one of our school psychologists. We have two school psychologists, and has been working with Bam for a little over a year now. You've, you know, you've had Bam for a while. She will tell you all on training, and hopefully would, she'll talk to you more about how he might join our staff at the high school.
The only thing I will correct Kelly on is she. This is, this is Bam, little girl. She is three years old, and she weighs about five pounds. I did not originally get Bam as a therapy dog, but her demeanor really drove me to want to do classes with her. So I started with the puppy training classes. We got her when she was just under a year old, and went on to Canine Good Citizen, and then she passed with Fly and Colors, her Alliance of Therapy Dog Test. So the paperwork is in the process now. I do have insurance in the process as well. I know that's part of having her be within the school district. Usually, I mean, Huxley is, is a larger dog, and then the fact that Bam weighs five pounds and she's so calm and she can sit in people's laps, that is really what drove me to have her become a therapy dog, because just, you know, having a dog around and petting a dog releases people's stress, and it can make the kids feel very comfortable. And even in some of the classrooms, bringing her in for the opportunity for the kids to take care of her, like changing her clothes, taking her for a little walk, and she does several tricks. That's my favorite part. Do you have any questions for Bam and I? And I did also, I'm sorry, I did also make an emergency plan if I'm unable to care for Bam or have to be taken away from being the handler. That is Sarah Finn, who is right across the hall from me. She's a special education teacher, so she's part of the plan, and I did speak with her today.
Anybody have any questions?
Just curious how Bam and Huxley get along. What do they think of one another?
Well, Bam actually has a friend, Mabel, on the street that's a yellow lap, and she is very, she's met all different sizes of dogs. The class that she was in, they had a Great Dane, they had a Burmese Mountain Dog, and part of it is just walking through, being good citizens with the canine, walking through and meeting other dogs. The way that they meet them is go and sit next to them, and they do not touch them, they do not interact, and that's kind of the way that it's supposed to be. They're paying attention to their handler rather than the other dog. So they're always interested, and when she does not have her collar on, as soon as she puts this on, she knows that she's going to work. I sit her down, I say, you want to go to work? And she, I put it on, and then she knows that she is on stage. So she knows how to act during that point, as opposed to when she's running around in the neighborhood with the other dog. She's just having fun being a dog, so she can code-switch there.
She's adorable.
I think there's, dogs are smarter than I give them credit for. Anybody else?
Well, I'll give you credit, so you're the first one to actually bring, bring, bring the, the dog with you this time, so.
Oh, absolutely.
That's a treat for us, because we approved Merle, but, you know, Merle wasn't here. So you, you mentioned the plans, that's part of the, part of the policy. I'm assuming you're still working that out with, with, with Kelly, and, but you're mentioning other people are going to help, but the policy does state that you are the only one that will.
Exactly.
Will actually be the handler, and so the interaction with students and staff, right?
Yes, and there would be no interaction with students if I were not there. Part of the plan is that I have a, a small crate, and she's absolutely, you see how calm she is. If I put her in the crate, that's where she sleeps at night, so I will have another crate in my office, and also a bed that she can just sit on between the counseling chairs, because I do have a large counseling caseload, and she will be there on all of my counseling days to help the kids.
And just to follow up on the, on the question, knowing, knowing Huxley and certainly looking at Bam, I'm assuming that they would have no problems, but I assume that'll, that'll, if that hasn't occurred, you'll socialize them relatively soon. Do you have a plan for when you would, would start, assuming Mr. Adams approves?
Yes, as soon as I do have my insurance and the paperwork is all in. It's in the process right now, but just having, legally for her to be in the building, she just through Alliance of Therapy Dogs, she has to have her therapy dog tag, and that's what's in the process right now. I've done all the other pieces of that, and it's just a matter of a few days, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, I would be able to bring her in.
Great.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
She's so awesome. I got to meet her in the park. Like, I've never seen such a small dog with such a calm demeanor, and she's perfect, and I think, you know, sometimes the Labs, the Goldens, even Gus, like, they can be big and too much, and kids not want to engage, and this is just another way that, another kind of method for kids to engage.
That, that kind of touched on a question I was going to ask you, and Paul, you may know what our policy says about it, but if you had a circumstance where a student was coming to see you but afraid of the dog.
Absolutely.
How do we handle that?
That's where the, the placement of the crate will be, my desk is L-shaped, so it will be behind the desk, and she will be in the crate. And anytime, my plan is anytime a student does come in the room, I will make sure that I ask them if they're comfortable with Bam, and then I'll kind of have an idea of which students are okay and whether which students are not. And I also have a friend who is a crafter, and she's making a sign for outside of my door. It's, it's designed after the Peanuts Lucy, where it's psychiatry five cents, but it'll have Bam's picture, and Bam is in, or Bam is out. So they'll also know that way, too.
And, and I assume you have, you know, even if that is uncomfortable for, for a student, you have other places you could go and.
Right across the home is Finn's room.
Leave her in her crate, right?
Yes, absolutely. And I can also take the students out of the room, because she would be comfortable being in the cage in the, in my office. So I can take the students to an alternative location as well.
And I, there's a question also for Mr. Adams. I'm assuming you're approving them for the entire district, so if there was a need at any of the other schools that, and she was available, that you'd be able to do that, right?
That is correct, yeah. If, I mean, if Davina had asked to, if, to go somewhere else, absolutely.
So, so for instance, like, if they have another event, they had an event at Warren or something like that?
And they asked.
And they ask, and you're available, so.
She could do that, if she, yeah, if she chose. But, but that being said, also, I think it's important to note, within the policy, we have to, you know, according to the policy, inform all of the families that we will have Bam in the school system.
Right, that was going to be my, my question for Kelly is, you know.
You just have to inform them.
Yeah, so is it going to go out in, in one of the newsletters prior to, prior to the start?
Yeah, we'll figure out how we're going to disseminate that.
Okay, so Jim, I understand that we don't need to take any action. This is more.
Correct.
Informational purposes, and then whenever everything's all squared away, you'll just approve that, and that's your discretion to the policy?
Correct. And you'll, and you'll know it's been approved when the communications gone out that Bam will be welcomed to her as part of the family.
Yeah, so this is for visibility and the communications for visibility, whenever we're going to have a, a permanent team in, in district.
Okay. Anything else on our friend Bam? Thank you. Thank you for introducing us to Bam.
Thank you so much. There's a lot, a lot of kids waiting for. They're very excited. And if they, they can improve in anybody's attendance, she's worth it.
There you go.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Ms. Inkur on the community service presentation.
Someone going to share it, I heard?
I'm going to share it, yeah. See, see if I can get this underway for you, Kelly.
Maybe just while, Jim's putting that together to sort of refresh everybody's memory. We've had a couple conversations, I think particularly at retreat meetings over the last couple of years about the community service requirement at the high school, and what does it look like? How does it work? Is it working? Should it be different? And it's been a topic of some discussion at the high school site council. So about two meetings ago, which unfortunately was one meeting I missed this year, the topic came up, and there was a fairly healthy discussion about it. Afterwards, Ms. Inkur and I spoke, and she indicated that the group is really looking for some direction from us as to sort of what's important to us, feedback, and then I think that'll lead to some more discussion at the high school level. But I'll turn it over to, to Kelly to sort of talk about where we are and, and the issues and concerns.
Yep. Thank you for having me. I think, looking back on the discussions we've had at Site Council, it's probably been well before COVID. We started really having discussions about what community service was and what it meant in the high school, and whether, you know, what the value was for our students, and, you know, did some looking at, oh, thank you, Jim, some of what our requirements were, what students were doing, what the advisor was overseeing, and whether or not the value in having it as a graduation requirement was the value that we wanted students to get out of it. I think when we think about our students, we certainly see that they're a group of students that are going to be committed to service regardless. There are students that are going to do it to check the box, and there are students that are probably never going to do it despite it being a graduation requirement. And then there's, you know, a fourth group of students who certainly do it to check the box and then do find a passion from what they are doing. But as, you know, I'm sharing here, what really became apparent to us during the pandemic and the closure, and is whether we talked about whether or not it was going to continue to be a graduation requirement, was the equity gap with our students and with the changing demographic. The, the more and more students that just don't have the access that we hoped that students would have and the ability to complete their service. And so in, in 2021 was the first time we formed a subcommittee to really look at what are some of the things that we're doing for community service? What are we, what are we calling community service? And is it something that we feel is still important to be a graduation requirement at Ashland High School? And that's really what we want to look at tonight, is the graduation requirement piece, which, you know, we thank you for waiving in 2020 and 2021. It was difficult, you know, near impossible, although we know that there were a lot of online options for service out there during the pandemic, trying to have, you know, all 150 to 200 kids within classes, you know, have access to that. We just saw that it wasn't, you know, wasn't, we weren't able to do that. So that's where we really started to say, okay, are we, you know, our conversation pre-pandemic was, how are we, how are students doing service? What counts as service, et cetera? And it changed during the pandemic, too. Should we even have this as a graduation requirement? You know, I shared some stats here about this year, even though we feel like we've had a couple of years where students, or a year and a half where students could be back earning service year, service hours. This was one of the lowest percentage of students that started with their service done. And I think pre-COVID, we definitely saw that it was the carrot that got kids to get their service done before senior year started, because they don't earn their senior, senior privileges without the service hours done. So, yeah, you can back up. So we just wanted to share a couple. Those are just some excerpts from our guidelines, which are extensive, and there, you can find them on the website under the student section, which is linked up there. But one of the things that we kept coming back to is this point that we are telling the students that they have to do it. They have to do service, that they're getting something back for themselves, and that it's meaningful to them, and that you're giving to the community, and you're not supposed to be doing it for something in exchange, yet we're saying, you need to do it, or you're not going to get a diploma. You can go to the next one. So some of the things that the subcommittee looked at and that we talked about, as, back up one more, please, Jim, that we, we had a lot of discussion, and I think the, the council really ebbed and flowed in terms of support for keeping the requirement and giving it up. These are some of the things that we talked about, that of course, we as a school and as a site council really value service and the importance of students learning. Part of our vision of the graduate is that they understand their civic responsibility and the, the importance of being part of their community and being kind and, and giving to others. Definitely think that it is, enriches students, and, and some of our students who serve on our site council were students who said, you know, I did this hour, not knowing when I was going to get out of it. Now I am a, you know, I'm going to work for the farmer's market forever, you know. So they really were able to see the benefit of it. But again, you know, what we were seeing as the adults were monitoring what they're doing, and we're seeing that it, this was not something that was impacting the class as a whole and all students. It was a smaller percentage. Okay, you can go to the next one, please. So then some of the conversations we had about eliminating it was, again, going back to the equity piece, and that we were seeing more and more students who aren't able to meet even the 25 hours because of their commitments at home, their ability to access other sites to do service. Our requirement currently are, the only staff that we have that participates, that are part of community service is the person that monitors the hours and keeps track of the hours. It has always been the expectation that students are going out and finding their own opportunities, that that is not a role that the school plays, is finding opportunities. When they come to us, we are always happy to share them, but that is not something that has been part of our process in the past. And, and I think in looking at what that the person in the current role did come to speak at a site council meeting, you know, it would, it would be a different responsibility to add on having to manage what the opportunities were and to make those available to students and make students aware of them. And then integrity was another big question that we've had, and what started our, our conversation, you know, at least five years ago, is we know we're receiving hours that have been modified. We know that we have received hours that have been signed off on that weren't really done. We know that students are often, unfortunately, looking for the easy, the easy service and the easy way out, and we, we kind of said, we're putting a lot into this, and are the students getting out of it what we really want them to, which is, you know, exposure to the value of service. You know, the next one, Jim. This is just another subcommittee chart and a couple of the questions that were put out to, this is just the site council members, so not, you know, not a big group, but we've kind of talked about, are we going to keep it as is? Are we going to expand our definition of about, about what qualifies as community service? We had a whole discussion about, do we give students hours for work if they're out working, or for taking care of their siblings, if that's something they're doing? We talked about eliminating the requirement and just looking at about how we adopt the value and create opportunities within the school. And that seemed to be, you know, eliminating the requirement, but looking at ways that we could make sure that we are building it into what we do within our school seemed to be the option that came out on top within our, this is again, just within Site Council.
Kelly, just because it's at least a little small here, maybe hard, maybe you could just summarize sort of the responses on the two.
So if you're looking at the color, you mean the chop, yeah, the, the green is 46.2%? That is option D, which was eliminate the requirement and adopt a school value of service that improves how we look at community service and promote it within the school. The red option is expand our definition of what qualifies as community service. So those were the two biggest choices within the group. You know, either we get much broader in what we accept, and really in the few years before the pandemic, we had kind of gotten a little tighter on what, we, we had really said service should be giving back for yourself. You know, we, we had some hours submitted where students were at their place of employment, but working without being paid and submitting that as service. So we had kind of tightened some of that up pre-pandemic. So we kind of said, do we need to go back to having some looser requirements on what is service? So, but the, just among Site Council, eliminating it by finding another way to express the value was what came out within that vote. And the bottom question is about whether or not it should just be eliminated as a graduation requirement. It was slightly in favor of eliminating.
And this, just so it's clear, this is different than the National Honor Society has its own requirement.
Exactly. And I think that might be coming up. But yes, we, you know, we still recognize, I think National Honor Society is an entirely different discussion for another time, but that is part of their, what they do is for their work, and, you know, it is one of their values. And students currently have to have a certain amount of hours to be accepted into Honor Society, and certainly they would continue to track hours for that. You can go to the next one. So one of the things we talked about and looked at is, you know, we are, we have a lot of clubs. We have a lot of groups at, at Ashland High School, and this is just a snapshot of some of them that either their mission or some of the activities that they do as part of their club are service-related. And the numbers there, I think it says represents the club membership. I forgot to put the number in for Red Cross Club, but I'll use them as an example of, they, you know, help run blood drives with the American Red Cross, but are also in the process right now of planning an activity where they're making Valentine's cards for a local homeless shelter. And, you know, that's something the, the club will work on, on their time. You know, some of the others are self-explanatory. Environmental Club is just now, they have done tree planting around town, and they are going to be picking up our high school recycling program. Makerspace, you know, is a class, is an after-school club, but there are also students that are donating their time to teach younger students about. Um, but there are also students that are donating their time to teach younger students, um, about the skills.
Community head stuff, right?
Um, you know, obviously the cares team, um, you know, Friday, um, last Friday, the cares team, twenty five. Um, students from the school who are not all members of the cares team, but, um, worked with the cares team to present an empathy program. Um, at Mendez to the fifth graders and, you know, spent, um, hours preparing that ahead of time. And then, um, about three hours over at Mendez after their exams were done on Friday and their own time, um, giving back there. So, we really talked about, we are, we are doing a lot within our community, um, and how can we improve on that? Uh, you can go to the next one. Um, so this is a, you know, I just, this is a conversation that comes a lot, up a lot with, um, my counterparts and, and looking at. Um, you know, we share a lot of what we do, um, at various schools and not that ever think we need to do what other schools are doing. Or that we shouldn't do something special just because other schools are doing, but I did just want to compare. Out of, I think I sent this out to about thirty other principals and this is all, you know, within the one twenty eight to four ninety five belt. Um, and, and five of the twenty two schools, um, in our group are doing, um, community service as a graduation requirement. Um, but then again, everybody tracks it or helps, everybody but one helps students track it, um, for National Honor Society. Um, and then there are several that do it as a class, um, several that offer, um, just cred outside, like, not a class. But students can earn credit, um, for community service hours. Um, and then there was a lot that do, um, a service day or a service project as a school. You go to the next one. Um, so that's where we are in thinking about, um, what would we like to see happen, um, with us at the school? You know, we talked a lot about how in, in some of these site council meetings, how could we make a school-wide event? That, um, we could guarantee that everyone would have some exposure to what community service is. Um, we talked about a community service day, um, and whether or not we picked a day, um, you know, I. An idea was in a, uh, day in the fall when, um. Other students were in the building, were engaged in something such as the PSATs and, um, you know, maybe taking one class every year. And saying, community service happens for the sophomores on this day in October and working within the community. See, um, how many different things we could make happen, um, with org, local organizations. Or giving students the chance to say, I work with an organization already in Boston, in Framingham, and I'm going to do that. But, um, helping to create opportunities. And then maybe that day opens up opportunities for students. Um, moving forward to keep continuing working with an organization. And then we, we hoped that would help address, um, some of those issues where we have students that we know can't get to places. Um, to, to give service, providing opportunities within our, um, within our system. Would allow them to have some exposure to some service. Uh, and then on top of that, tying in a fair where we would, you know, also be able to bring in organizations. That could speak to, um, the opportunities they have. Um, you know, right now, it really is just if an organization reaches out to us and says, I have this opportunity, are willing to post it. Um, you know, we email it out, we put it in our announcements, um, we post it on our boards. But, um, you know, having a day where we could say to the community, if you have opportunities, please come in and share them with our students. Um, you know, we talked about, um, sometimes as hard as it is to get our seniors to do service. That last week of school, that's always a great, a great time for our students and, um, you know, it's. They walk away recognizing that it's been their opportunity to give back to the district, um, before they, um, get their diploma. Um, and, um, I, I would say that's probably been at least six years. But there was a time where we were able to work with a lot of community organizations. The last couple of years, we have only done this day within the school. Um, we would love to get back to working with, um, town hall, police, fire, businesses within the community like we did previously. Um, to have smaller groups of seniors out giving back at the end of the year. Um, we fully intend to continue with that, um, event. Um, I don't think in the near future, but, um, would, you know, we did have that conversation about, do we look at it being something we offer for credit? And, um, I don't know if I put this in the right place, but one of the proposals, um, that we did talk about was keeping it. Um, and looking at a waiver for those that are in need. Um, and it, the council really kind of went back to, you know, are we, we're putting, putting a waiver in place. To us felt like putting another barrier, um, in front of people that might have a challenge with doing things. With then having to self-identify another thing I'm not able to do. Um, so I, I, that wasn't, um, something that was, um. Ideal to all of us, um, but was a discussion we had around, um, having it as a requirement. And you can go to the next one. Again, this is a little separate, but we did have the question about whether or not we should keep, um, senior privileges, um, as an incentive. Um, it, it, it hasn't seemed to work the last two years. Um, and we, we just, um, actually changed our privilege policy this week again to expand to, um, include lunch. Um, so I think we might get a few more, um, students doing some hours now, um, so they can leave during the lunch hour and a half. Um, but, uh, you know, we, we kind of had that discussion about whether or not that's kind of a, you know. An, an extra that student, you know, students can earn and might be a way to keep them working on their hours. Um, and this I just shared with you, um, a link to the spreadsheets that are kept, um, for each class and the number of hours they have completed. Um, and, you know. Uh, we're halfway through, uh, senior year and seventeen percent of the senior class has not done any hours yet. So, um, it's, it's. Computer's going to shut down or something. Um, so that is all I have. I think, um, I, I, I come here asking to reconsider. The, um, twenty-five hour graduation, uh, requirement. And, um, I think, um, probably that what, without losing, uh, community service as a value. We'd like to explore the idea of doing community service day and fair. Um, that would give us an opportunity to expose all of our students to community service.
So Kelly, that, that, just to summarize quickly, the, the ask is at this point to remove. This community service requirement for graduation.
As a graduation requirement.
This year.
Um, I think I, I would probably leave that to you for discussion. I think typically when we change something that's a graduation requirement, we would. Um, choose a year down the road to start, whether or not we say with the incoming ninth grade, you know, the class of twenty twenty seven. Whether we look at where the, the class of twenty twenty six is now. Um, and change it for them. I, I, um, I'm not asking to change this year, I think.
See what thoughts people have or questions people have. Anybody? Want to jump in?
Yeah, thank you for sharing this information. I think it's really helpful to, to hear the feedback of the site council to see some of the numbers in terms of. How many students have and have not done community service. And it's also really helpful to hear from your perspective. Whether or not the graduation requirement is an incentive, what is an incentive for students to do it, what may draw them to do community service? I certainly, I, I like that it's, that, that students are incentivized to do it, but whether or not the graduation requirement is the right incentive. Clearly, you know, the answer is maybe not. I absolutely see the barriers it puts in place for some students and I think we need to, to be very careful of how we look at this through an equity lens. Because it, it is problematic. And so, uh, I, I really like your idea of having each graduating class have their own service day. Uh, where there are designated projects to do or they can get involved as a group. I know, you know, from, I have two students who are in high school. And the most meaningful community service they've done to date are ones where they've done it with other groups of students. So it's, it's, I think they've also gotten more out of it. Because it's a little bit more fun for them to do it with friends and, and other students as well too, but they can also see the impact that kind of that group effort can have. So, um, so I certainly love that idea. Um, and, you know, I think. Having, the, the fair certainly sounds like a great idea to introduce students. Uh, whether or not it, they'll actually connect with it, I think it will probably have to be, you'll see how it rolls out and hopefully it'll, it'll create more opportunities. For students to get involved. Um, the one thing I was wondering, you went, you went through, you know, a lot of the clubs that, that did service opportu. Or had service opportunities or just did service as part of their function. Um, has, has there been any discussion in terms of how to involve them in increasing activity? You know, kind of thinking through ways to get more kids involved in the different things that they do, um.
Um, no. Have we, you mean, have we talked to clubs about saying if they could create more opportunities for students to do service or get more kids involved?
Getting more kids involved, like just thinking even like through the Red Cross, you know, like, and maybe, you know, of the, some of the students are aware of it. But I would imagine, um, most of the students who are going to sign up are ones who are, have already signed up for the club, right? And so, they're, I, I'm thinking that using some of those opportunities and thinking through ways to maybe make, not so much more inclusive. Because it's not that anyone's excluded from them, right? But thinking through ways to, to make them more well-known, um, to, to, to present them in a different way. Um, you know, to, to bring maybe more students into the fold so that they have those opportunities too.
Yeah, certainly a lot of the clubs have done, you know, have been at lunches presenting this is what we have coming up. This is, we'd like you to get involved. You know, and so the clubs have put out opportunities. If you are willing to be part of this activity, you will earn service hours for it. Um, so, yeah, we've looked at different ways to, um, get the information out. And try to, you know, I think several of the clubs have tried different ways to get students involved. Um, I think, I think with the blood drive, we did say at least the first year we brought it back, because that had been gone, obviously, with COVID. Um, um, this, this computer's dying. I don't know if that matters. It's restarting. I think we were offering service hours for kids that were willing to give blood.
Yeah, and the only last thing I would say is, I do like the idea of having some incentive tied to it. Because I think there are, there is a certain segment of kids that, that that drives them to get involved and they do discover that they enjoy it. And they kind of push them to, to be more involved in ways that they may not. But, but I would agree that in terms of the graduation requirement, that may not be the fairest way to approach it.
We always have had a, a small handful that they end up setting up for graduation and that's how they get their service done. They don't get to go on senior week. They're setting up chairs instead, um, where it's getting bigger and bigger. You know, we don't have enough, um, to create within the school to meet their needs.
What are the senior privileges that they are in by having them completed beforehand?
Uh, that's part of why it's not much of an incentive right now. Uh, well, uh, actually, I take it back for this year, but it, with COVID, it wasn't much of an incentive. Um, so they get to come in late if they have a study or leave early if they have a study. Um, and, uh, they can, what we just added was if they have a study during lunch block, they can also leave then. Uh, and then really the, a lot of the other privileges had, have gone away because of COVID. They used to have their own outside seating area in the warmer weather. Um, we allow everyone there now. There are other privileges that are escaping me right now, but that's basically the ones that have always been what they're working for is the leaving. Um, earlier, coming in late. And students that are inducted into National Honor Society also get those privileges as juniors.
So, uh, thank you again, Kelly, for, uh, coming in and presenting this. And I know we've had some conversations as well. You know, I'll, I'll start with where am I, where I am on it for graduation requirement, then I'll back it up with, with why. If we're not removing it for this year, I don't see a, a value in removing it for incoming freshmen, right? I think what we lack is, so for things we typically have as graduation requirements, whether it be academic, whatever it is. We have supports and we have structures and, and, and ways for them to make sure they succeed. We have this requirement right now and we, we're lacking in that way, right? So, we don't have the methods, the, and, and the supports to ensure that all students can succeed, right? And, and, but you're talking a lot in, in this presentation, what you've said about, okay, how do we do better there, right? So, for me, we, we've said it, it's in our value statements and in our vision statements and still in about community. And, and, and I think especially right now with how, you know, in general, society is detached. It governs that, everything. I want students graduating from Ashland to have a sense of community. And that they should be contributing to the community and not just existing. Uh, so from that perspective, if we're not helping out this group, which has a couple of years. If they're graduating right now, they've had a couple of years where it wasn't as easy to, to go out and, and do that. So, while other previous years, people have had four years of whatever they wanted to do. Um, so, if we're not doing it here, I, I wouldn't see a value in doing it for incoming freshmen. Because, well, let's see what we can do to support them. If we have the supports. Um, I think having as a graduation requirement and being able to say, students that graduate from Ashland, you know, have this. And I think we've talked about, uh, some of those things, right? You know, is it, right now, they have to do it on their own. Well, that's inequity, right? So there's, there's, if my son wants to go and find it, I, I'm well-connected to organizations that are. Very easy for me to say, hey, why don't you, I'll put you in touch with this person. Uh, but that's not the case for everyone. So, maybe there's ways we can work to find, you know, a software tool. That is, organizations can, you know, input, hey, we have this opportunity. Because I, there, there's tons of opportunities out there.
We spent a lot of time looking into software tools and. Never found one that was going to be, um. Easy to use, easy to vet, um, the organization that was proposing, um, easy to get out to students. No way to make sure it would be, you know, then students would still have equitable access to a software, software tool.
Well. One-to-one district now and everybody has a Chromebook and so if it's something, but, but again, that's just an example of, okay, how can we? Because right now, even with the things you're talking about, it's still a burden on staff to do it this very manual way, right? So, how do we, I would be in favor of the, all the things you mentioned, right? We should, we should really define what it means so that, hey, when somebody says, does this qualify? Well, hey, does it fit the definition? And you can have the ability to say, yes, it does. And, and it should be something that is, isn't arbitrary. Uh, we should still have the waivers because as we talked, we could have move-ins, right? Somebody moves in and they have.
Well, that are, they, it's, it's six point two five a year. They don't have to do the whole twenty-five, um, if they moved in as a senior.
Yeah, so, but, but we also at the, at the event, uh, last month, talked about other things that are impediments to them. So, um, you know, so, I guess, I guess that's where I, where I am. I, I like the fact that this isn't just coming with, we have an issue, but it's coming with, what about these things, right? Uh, right now, are the clubs and the things that, when they're doing community ba, uh, community service things within their clubs, that they're getting. Is that, uh, credit towards the graduation requirement?
It depends on the event. Um, if, if it is an event that benefits the club, then no. If it's, uh, an event that's benefiting maybe the organization that they're working for, it might, um, be hours for club members. But those students that are officers of the club might not get the hours. It really, it's kind of event-specific. Meeting the guidelines that we have.
Yeah, so I, I think we should probably, you know, try, try to make sure those guidelines are clear and, and maybe expand them, right? So what does it mean for the community service? But, uh, as far as, I'd like to see where we are if we can implement some of these things and, and, and can we do a better job supporting it, make it equitable? Uh, because I still value it, right? I, I want, you know, and if we don't make it something that they have to do, you know, I, I, one of the comments was, hey, if, if they do it. Uh, on their own, it's, it's better. Like, of course it's better. You know, but as a parent, you still need to get, kick your kids in the butt to do some things that are going to be beneficial to them. And so I think.
And our kids are lucky to have those parents.
Yeah, and, 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 and without that, you know, sometimes it, it, it's the, it's the district or, or some other entity that, that provides that incentive. So, um, I guess I, I think it'd be premature. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying no to ever removing it. But if we're not doing it now, I don't see the, I don't, I don't see the benefit to removing it for those who. We haven't even tried to put this, these supports and, and, and improve the situation. Because right now, it almost feels like a, we've, we've, we, you know, it started before I was on here, but we gave it an unfunded mandate. Right? Here's a graduation requirement, you're on your own. And that, that didn't, that's not equitable to staff, right? That's not equitable to the students. Um, and, well, let's, let's fund the mandate, right? Let's, let's put the supports in place to. I think, I think from a value perspective. Let's, let's put the supports in place to, I think, I think from a value perspective, I, I would value it as a, as a graduation requirement. But I, I understand that there are certainly a lot of challenges because it's essentially unfunded mandate right now.
Tina, before you jump in, I actually just wanted to give Lori a chance to jump in, cause I know this is a topic we've talked about and. I'm not necessarily watching for her raising her hand, whatever, but Lori, did you, anything you wanted to add?
Yes, actually, um, and I did sit on the high school site council for several years. And we've talked about this before and it's been on my mind for a long time. And I think I come down to um. Agreeing, I think of what you're saying, Kelly, um, that it's, it's problematic to have it as a graduation requirement. And I wouldn't even necessarily be comfortable having it related to senior privileges anymore. And I, I hear what you're saying, Paul, but I think that the problems with it have been going on for a long time. And I think what you end up seeing, so the, the goal, right, is we want to expose people to how it feels to. Be a good community member and even maybe an obligation if we believe that everybody has that obligation. But I think it became more about like what people are doing and how many hours they're spending instead of why they're doing it. Um, and having it come from the heart and having it um, come from a real place of service. It really, on, on one extreme, it becomes a competition. Um, and all the kids are running around to see who gets the most hours and people are actually rewarded at graduation for how many hours they get. And there's no real way to even monitor if those are, you know, quality service hours or not. And so in one group of students, it becomes just another, you know, I'm doing more than you are and here's the proof. And I just want an award at graduation. And again, I'm not saying that everybody's approaching it that way. But it, it's a problem on that end of the spectrum and then on the other end of the spectrum. Um, people who either can't do it or really truly like don't want to. And I'm not sure if that should be forced either. I think our obligation is to make sure every student is exposed to an opportunity. So that people who think they don't want to may feel differently about it once they've been given an opportunity. And they, they see how it feels to actually step up and help somebody out. So I would be in favor of things like the fair, stepping that up a little, stepping up senior week. Maybe having it actually be one of the events of senior week or the whole class, you know, on the day before you go to the farm or wherever you're going. Go somewhere and clean up some trash or as a class. Um, just put people in situations where they're doing it and it's not connected to some privilege or reward that they're going to get. Because that's not what it's supposed to be about anyway. Um, and so I, I think our job is to provide an opportunity. And I would like to see us do better with that, but I think having it, and I know with teenagers, you have to incentivize it. And I get all that, why we've been approaching it that way, but in all the years that I've seen it go down. I mean, it works for a certain subset of the population, but there are too many people that it doesn't work for and it's not meaningful. And a lot of people at the school are putting a lot of effort and hours and tracking people down. And I don't think it's something we don't want to graduate people over. Um, and I also don't think it's something that, you know, you have to go do X, Y, or Z to get your, your, your privilege. Um, that, that maybe they're not, I, I really also think that it's just something that should come from the heart and it's personal. So anyhow, I think it's time to approach it in a different way and I would be in favor of, of, of limiting it, aiding it right away. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Lori. Tina, you wanted to get in?
Yeah, no, two things. One to follow up on what Lori just said. I think one of the, the wonderful things about the idea of having like class service days, so let's say each, each year or maybe once throughout, I don't know. However, it would work, is that it's, it's not just an opportunity to do service, but it's modeling service, which I think is a, a, what we really want to do. Um, and help them engage in it, but also model the value of, of service. So, um, so just wanted to say that, but kind of thinking on, on Paul's comment in terms of, you know, kind of the, creating the structures to support it. Um, you had mentioned, you know, kind of the time and effort that the teachers put in that just track the numbers. And so kind of thinking through the logistics, like, do we even have the capacity to do that, like?
So I guess I'll, I'll throw my two cents, I mean, I, I, I start from the position of, of believing that community service is an important thing. There are a bunch of people sitting at this table who raise their hand and show up here for, you know, for the big paycheck that we get, right? You know, and, and, and I think everybody feel it with schools in some ways, although it's a job, there's also a passion there and a, and a community service embedded in that. So I think we're probably a, a crowd of people that supports this as a general proposition. So I, it, it's hard for me to kind of let go of that. Um, but I, I will also say I agree completely with the point Lori made, which is it, it, it should be coming from the heart, right? And um, you know, having people do community service because they're told to. Um, I don't think is the best way to instill a belief, understanding, or appreciation for engaging community service. It should be service, not indentured servitude. And I think there's, you know, there's a big difference there. One of the things I, I know what you're really looking forward tonight is, you know, whether we are willing to um, change the graduation requirement. One thing I'll just share with you, um, and some other people, I think in the room have been through the program, Leadership Bench West program. Which, you know, is a sort of, it's a, an adult program, um, but it explores different issues. In, in our Bench West region and, and things like that. But a component of it, um, in ex, in addition to sort of a leadership curriculum. And understand leadership challenges in our community is a service project. And the class as a whole, these are classes of twenty people or so, um, determines what they want to do as their community service project. Um, in a group and sort of, when you talked about the idea of a class, that kind of like triggered, like that would actually be a neat thing to do. A lot of work, we'd have to support it with, with staff, right, cause it becomes a class. But I think, you know, in the long term, I'd love to see something like that and I think the, the idea of having some sort of um. Class-wide project or set of projects at some point in the process makes a lot of sense. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to lose it and I think it's, I don't want to lose the focus on community service. I think it is, is a part of our vision and mission. Um, and so I think it's really important that, you know, we don't lose sight of that if we just make the graduation requirement go away. And I know that's not what you're suggesting. It's just hard, in some respects, I'm like struggling with like, but if I, if I let it go now, I don't know what's going to happen to it, right? So all that said, I, you know, I, I would support um, doing away with the graduation requirement, at least temporarily. I had, as, as you were talking, Paul, that I had the thought of, maybe we just suspend it for a couple of years or something like that while you figure out what the next iteration is. Um, and I'm not, I don't feel strongly, we could always just put it back.
And I think when I asked for it with the class of twenty twenty-seven, just because my experience in graduation requirements is that's how we've done graduation requirements in the past. I would not be opposed to.
Yeah, I think at this point, it feels like if we're going to, it's one thing to change a graduation requirement and give people four years to comply with it. If now they have to go do something extra, but right now we're relieving something. And so to say, you're good, you know, I, I think it's less of a concern.
And, and to be clear on my position, I'm not saying that it should be twenty-five hour, I think we can redefine it. And I think, to me, there's, we're almost arguing semantics. If we want to do the things that were mentioned, a class, project class, uh, service day, all those things. And, okay, so what if they don't want to do that, they just don't show up to school that day? I mean, so, but we want to, you know, yes, everything should be coming from the heart, that's what, but they're, they're teenagers. You, you have to, you know, kind of put them in a situ, force them into a situation that maybe they can, they can do that. But maybe it's, hey, you have to do three things, right? Not twenty-five, twenty-five hours seems, I don't know where it came from, it seems arbitrary, right? And it might, and it might be a, it might be a hard, hard thing to do, but redefining what it means and maybe if it's, you know, part of some. We can, we can weave in some academic things and make it part of one of the classes they have to take, or whatever that, whatever that is. But I don't want to lose to, to your point, I don't want, it, we, we, we have it in our vision statements, we have it through and throughout. Everything we say is a value, but how do we, how do we express that value? It shouldn't just be, golly gee whiz, I hope you do it, right? It should be more than that. Does it need to be twenty-five hours or, or you don't regret? No, I, I'm not beholden to that, but we can't say it's a value and then not, just like our budget, right? Our budget's a value statement, oh, we value S E L or we value this in zero dollars, right? So I don't want to go that route, that we say, hey, now it's just lip service, we value the service, but we're not going to show that value somehow. So I, I, I think that's where I'm coming from is whether it's twenty-five hours or not, I don't, clearly that hasn't worked, but we haven't actually supported it either, right? Maybe it's, maybe that's should stated, I have no idea at all, it seems arbitrary to me, but we can redefine it. But to me, it's, we say it's a value, let's make sure we figure out a way to value it.
I think it's a hard thing to do, I mean, Kelly said, you know, sort of the integrity is, in our current model is, is a concern. And I, I've certainly seen that from what I see and, you know, one, one concern I do have is there are a lot of organizations in town. That get help, right, because kids are required to help. You know, like my wife's involved in simple gesture and as is, you know, your kids participate, you've helped too, Tina. And, you know, I don't know whether the volunteers that are participating in that program will continue to do that. If there's not unfortunately, something in it for them. And so the impact of our decision also hits other organizations, right, and I think we all have to be aware of that. I don't have the right answer, I'm just, it's a concern.
I was just gonna say, we, and when we have our summer um, retreat, a lot of times we've had the building administrators come. What if we, we've talked here already about kind of putting a pause on it, put a pause. But making sure it is a major retreat topic where Kelly, Jim, and whoever else. Need, do the research required so that we can figure out the answer for the twenty twenty-seven class coming in. And talk to the community stakeholders to understand what they think they might lose. Like I just volunteered last Friday at Kids Night Out and there were high schoolers there. You know, it's hard to get volunteers for Kids Night Out and having extra set of semi-adult hands to herd cats is always helpful. And so.
Let me pose a question that, that just, I don't mean to interrupt, interrupt you, but. And, and, cause I'm, I'm having a hard, a little bit of a hard time sort of judging where people are, um, with the, maybe the exception of Lori. I think maybe the core question is, without worrying first about whether, what the requirement looks like. Do folks still want to have something that is a community service requirement, whether it's redefined, shorter, different, measured, whatever? Because I think in some ways, we're all kind of struggling or straddling that line of like, we do, but not like that, or we do and we're not sure. Because, and, and the reason I said it, Erin, in particular is, you know, Kelly's got some ideas of, of ways she'd like to go with it that are really different. Um, and probably take some time to implement and build and make successful. And we're, and our role really is, what are we going to establish as a graduation requirement, if, if any? Cause if it's not a graduation requirement, it's really a high school program and it's entirely, you know, administration to, uh, up to them to kind of figure out what the right approach is. So maybe we should just try to start by focusing a little bit on that question.
I'm okay getting rid of the requirement, I'm okay getting rid of the requirement for senior privileges, cause I think it's. I, I think you have the same concept of inequity, um, and access. And for something like running to Dunkin' Donuts to get an iced coffee doesn't seem like.
Well, it's a big deal to get their cars.
No, no, and what I'm saying is like, if, if your family doesn't have the resources to be able to get you to a volunteer event. Or there's language barriers or whatever, that you can't go with your friends.
I think, but I think we all should stay focused on the graduation requirement, cause the other stuff is.
I'm fine waiving it for the class of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I mean, for me, uh, I, I would, and I think I kind of, you know, you started with that is, if we're not doing it. For, for right now, which is, A, they've gone through with our lack of support. And they have a basically a two-year gap of, you know, uh, void. So for me, I'd be okay pausing it, but putting it as part of, maybe as part of our strategic planning. And making it a goal to try to address on how we value it, right? What, what does that mean? And maybe introducing it as a, a graduation requirement, but with an appropriate amount of support and opportunity, right? Uh, or doing it some, but figuring out, putting it back onto some kind of strategic goal. To see how we, how we claim we value it, right? So I'm, 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 I'm fine, like I said, if, cause if any year, it's the past couple of years, including this class. If, if they, if there was a struggle before, there's certainly a struggle right now. And, and I would, I would be in favor of, okay, let's, let's remove it now and, but let's see how we can, can value it.
So I actually agree with Paul in terms of putting the pause on it now. But I hesitate to, you know, right now, the graduation requirement is kind of our, our method of encouraging and getting students involved. Clearly it's not working, so we have to revisit whether or not that's the right way to do it. Uh, but in terms of making change, I hesitate to take away what we have without knowing what we're replacing it with. Uh, and I feel like I'd want a lot, some more clarity on what that's going to look like. Um, but I think putting a pause on it, because in particular, for the reasons you just articulated, like this class is, has had a lot of barriers. We know that there are other barriers other than COVID, um, that we need to address. But um, taking it blanketly, removing it without kind of knowing how we're shifting our focus to community service, I feel a little uncomfortable with. But, but the pause for this year in particular, I think is a great idea.
So Kelly, how does, how does that, like what position does that leave you in in terms of what you want to look to? Because we're now really three years in a row, we've waived this because of, of COVID and, and hopefully that won't be the problem for year four.
Last year had the requirement.
Oh, we did? Okay, I thought we had waived.
Twenty and twenty-one, we waived.
Okay, um, so I guess my.
Twenty-two, we were, you know, down to the wire, working to find ways to get kids through hours.
Where, where does it leave you to be dealing with a, a sort of a pause rather than a decision?
I think if it's a pause for just the class of twenty twenty-three, that puts us in a difficult position with definitely the class of twenty twenty-four. But you know, it's, it, that year to year puts us in a, in a tough spot with the classes that are in the building. That are questioning, should I be doing hours, should I not? And that's, a lot of kids are doing hours because we have a lot of kids that apply to National Honor Society and know they need those hours. They're doing way above the twenty-five before their junior year.
And, and to further clarify, I was saying, doing it now, but not necessarily, cause I don't, I don't think it's fair. Until we know what we're going to do, so I think it would be a pause for at least the next two classes, right? You know, and then I think depending on what we come up with, we have to then see when we introduce it. Because it's got to be, you know, achievable, we can't just say, oh yeah, now it's, we figured out a way you can do thirty hours. And, oh crap, I'm, I'm a junior, how am I going to, how am I going to do that? Right, so I, I'm, I think we pause it with, you know, at least for th- these next two classes. Just to, and figure out how we then phase it in, whatever that next thing is, if it's related to graduation. Uh, no, I don't know what it's going to be, but that's, um, so I, 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 I wouldn't put on a one-year pause. Cause I don't think we're going to have an answer that quickly.
Let me just see if Lori wants to jump in at all again.
Well, I, I, I think a pause on the one hand is a good idea because it is true, Tina. We, we don't know what we're moving towards and I think it sounds like we're definitely all on the same page. By indicating that it's a value, it's important and as a district, we need to be doing something about it. But it sounds like most of us agree that this system isn't working. So calling it a pause and then, you know, you have all these classes maybe, or in, and if you're doing it for two classes, but not everybody. You know, it's a cumulative thing, a, and if we are saying we're pausing it for two years, but we might change our mind after that. Then, you know, where does that leave the freshmen when they needed to get to twenty-five, you know? I, I think we're saying this, if we're saying this isn't working, let's just call it what it is, it's not working. And end it with the understanding that we are going to replace it with something, but not to leave it in limbo like that. So I, I would, I feel strongly that we need to do other things, but it sounds like the site council has already talked about what that might look like. Um, and it doesn't sound like anybody intends to just stop putting a focus on this. It's just not going to be in this way.
So what, how would people feel if, if we sort of voted to, to change it from the twenty-five, twenty-five hour requirement to something like? There shall be a community service requirement and for the time being, we'd say as defined by the high school. So that we're at least putting a stake in the ground, there's something there. It, it still has the concern about the graduation requirement piece of it and I think that's a piece we have to sort through. But it allows. The principal and the administrative staff to kind of decide. How this is going to shift and it might vary from year to year. But it takes away the, you know, the check the box exercises, it takes away the, you know, I'm going to volunteer one hour and get three for it. Um, I don't, it just came to me, I don't know how that.
Yeah, I mean, so you're talking about having it a graduation requirement, but having it be, and that's not, this is not to say anything about the. But be arbitrarily decided by the. And that seems odd to me. I mean, I'm.
It is odd.
I, I think.
But it cuts us through this period of limbo or of transition.
Though, I mean, because then it, we would still kind of be in that same confusing space that Lori mentioned, that like the freshmen saw it might change by the time.
It's a moving target, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it still feels like it's a move, but I hear exactly what you're saying, like, how can we reword our policy in terms of the graduation requirement? To give the high school flexibility to figure this out, but still for us to make a decision.
I think that Lori's quite. I mean, to me, I think the, the key is that it's not lost, right? So I'm okay saying we eliminate it. And the elimination of the current requirement is permanent. As long as we put it in a strategic plan as a goal. You know, and, and it's something that we're, we're tracking. That when, when we have something. We then have a plan for implementation. That'll, that will ensure that it's equitable and fair. Uh, that way, hey, if it takes us two years and it's like, okay, great, this thing is achievable. And the, the new thing is only applicable to juniors and, and seniors because it's part of some curricula that we do. Okay, well, then that would be different than if it's, hey, we're back to twenty five hours, but we have the structure. And it's a four year thing, we, we'd put it in and we'd phase it in differently, right? So, uh, I guess, you know, I, I'm, I'm cool with that as long as we do both things. We say we're getting rid of it and then put it in something formal that says we will address this.
Can we even vote on this tonight? Cause it's not on the agenda as something we're, we're voting, it's just a presentation.
No, well, we, we can vote on it. The agenda requirement is simply that we put a. Put the topic out there that we're going to be discussing and then that puts the community on notice about it. You know, I, I, I don't know that this is something, my personal opinion that. We, that the community's kind of a strong opinion out where you have thirty people who want to come and talk about it. Um, you know, I don't. Yeah, I doubt it, right? But now the, the fact that it says community service. Presentation, I think is fine. Uh, but let me just ask the question on that point. Are we, do you have a time constraint that you're up against, Kelly, that worried about particularly with this current class? Like if we need, do we need to make a decision tonight or could we come back to it two weeks from now?
Two weeks from now is fine.
Yeah, because. The agenda I do actually have a little bit of a problem with. It doesn't say, it says community service presentation. That means somebody's going to come and present something to us. That doesn't, so if somebody were to complain about that, they might have a legitimate.
You know, talk about the, make it the graduation requirement.
Yeah, and, and, and so if there's not an urgency, I think we're all on the same page. And quite frankly, let's put it on the agenda, let it go out to, in, in a newsletter that we're going to talk about. Potentially eliminating it and trying to readdress it and. Maybe some people will show up on Zoom at least and, and provide feedback, because that's, I, I think it's, I think it's a, you know, we're, we're changing a graduation requirement. I don't think we should do it flippantly and I'm not saying we are, but the way it's presented on the, on there would give me a little bit of pause.
Kim, you were trying to jump in.
Hey, Mark, Jim has some input, yeah. Go ahead, Jim.
So, yeah, I, I, I agree. I think I would feel more comfortable that it's a policy and, and we have not vetted it through. And identified it as a policy discussion tonight, so IKF's or IK's F or, I forget what it is. Uh, IKF is the graduation requirement. It's under the policy. I, I think if we're going to adjust policy, we should label it that we're having that conversation. That's all. I'd feel, I would certainly feel more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Because it's policy, does it need to go through policy?
No, nothing, nothing needs to go through, uh, it, but, but. I forgot that, yeah, it's actually a policy, so we should list the policy on there and say, hey, we are going to revoke this policy or. Or if there's a modification, I have to look at, look at, look at the policy.
Leave the conversation there. We sort of started the, the conversation. Um, but I don't know that we can move it farther tonight anyway. So why don't we leave it there? We'll put it on the agenda for the next, um, meeting as well. If you'd like to join us, maybe virtually next time if you want to do that. But thank you, Kelly, for coming in.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
We'll obviously be talking more about it. So I leaned over to Mr. Kyra here a few minutes ago and said, hey, what's Pete here for? And realizing it wasn't, it wasn't obvious to me, he said, it's part of the assistant superintendent's report. Thought maybe to help them get out of here, we could take these out of order. So, um, everybody's good with, with going to the assistant superintendent's update. Which you've got a report, I think, on literacy, Mike? And, and you've got at Warren School, so why don't we, I don't think we need a motion to change your order, we're just going to go to the assistant superintendent's.
Just consensus.
Mr. Kyra.
I'm just trying to share my screen here. I think I already am. And I want to get the right thing up.
I was gonna say, don't show that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll apologize to John for making him sit there.
So, uh. We wanted to give you a mid-year update on how we're doing with our early literacy initiatives, specifically the work that we're doing at the Warren School. So I had asked Kate Altman, our assistant principal, and Kathy Faraki, our, our literacy coach. To join us today, as well as Mr. Regan, Pete Regan, our, our Warren School. Principal, uh, to, to help to put together some information. Uh, to just sort of show you where we are at this point. A, a tremendous amount of work has been done. Uh, some of these slides you've seen before, we just want to quickly review some things, but also just update you on where we are. Specifically around some of the data that we're seeing, some of the trends that we are seeing. And what we are doing specifically at the Warren, based on those trends to make sure that. We're providing every student exactly what they need in the area of literacy. So you have seen this before, and this is actually directly related to some of the work that, uh, Mr. Adams may be talking about later on when he, when he's, uh, addressing the goals. Our, our district goals and our superintendent goals. Uh, this is an assessment, um, plan. This is a very comprehensive assessment plan that was created in the spring, um, spearheaded by, by Kathy. And it, 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 it shows you what is happening at grades K one and two in terms of the different assessments. Uh, and, and why we would be looking at those specific assessments for the students. As we've talked before, we know once we get into literacy, we oftentimes get into the whole alphabet soup game, so if there's some of that going on, I'm, I'm happy to. To clarify some information. I don't know if we need to get into the weeds that far. But what we do want to tell you is, is the major assessment that we're utilizing this year. For our K one and two students is the DIBELS. That is the di, the dynamic indicator of basic early literacy skills. And essentially this is what we are using to, um, identify students for our early literacy screener to ensure that students who may be showing some early signs. Of dyslexia or early signs of reading weaknesses are caught. And then we are allowed to have the capability to intervene early. To provide them with either the tier two supports that they may eventually need. But this is something that really is based on tier one interventions to make sure all students are getting everything that they need. So as you can see, uh, there's a lot of different assessments that are happening and we just finished our mid-year. Our middle of the year M O Y assessments, um, for K one and two. So some information, uh, that we've gleaned from this, these reports. Uh, we are using a tool called Amplify and Amplify allows us to track, uh, the student data. What we get is a composite score and the composite score for each of the different grade levels is, is, is made up of a variety of different skill sets that you can see in the white block there. So the composites for the kindergarten is, is based on letter naming, phonemic awareness, correct letter sounds, their students' ability to decode. And students' ability to read words. Uh, there's a various amount of subtests that are done to provide us with a different score for each one of our students. In those areas and the different scores in those areas lead to allowing us to know if they are reaching a certain benchmark. The, the benchmark scores are on the bottom right of this, of this slide. So for instance, in the beginning of a year, any student who scored between two hundred and two seventy nine as their composite score would have been considered. To be well below benchmark. As you can see, looking at this particular table. You need to have a significant amount of growth in your composite score to be able to move up a level. The, the, the field goal marker changes, right? The touchdown changes, the yard marker changes for these students as they go. Because it becomes more challenging as the year goes on and more skills are supposed to be, um, met. So it's, it's hard work. It's, it's, it's really hard work. And, uh, one of the things that I wanted to point out is in particular with kindergarten. We're looking for all children to score four twenty as their composite points by the end of the school year. So in order to be, uh, at benchmark or a. As, as a beginning student, it's a three oh six, right? So that's a, that's a huge amount of growth that they're making to maintain. Being on grade level or at benchmark. So I just wanted to give that. That piece to you all as we look at these scores. Uh, as you can see in kindergarten, uh, thirty to seven percent of our students in the beginning of the year were above benchmark and we're right at the same. Same pace there in terms of the thirty seven percent. Um, we, we increased five percent with our at benchmark students for kindergarten. Uh, stayed the same with below benchmark and actually decreased the number of students who were well below benchmark by twenty one percent.
Mike, do you, um, just understand this data a little bit? I assume you're able to see. Sort of whether these are actually the same kids, so.
Yes.
Right, above benchmark is example thirty seven, thirty seven.
Right.
That may be the same or may not be.
It may be this, exactly. And, and, you know, while we're not getting into the weeds with this data here at this meeting. This is the beauty of what we're doing at the building level and at the grade level and even at the classroom level. And we're going to show you some of that work that's been done later on. But that's where those data team meetings that we have are coming in handy, where we are looking at it at a student level to see. And I can show you some really great stuff that's happening at the school for that. But we did want to just give you an, an overview of what it looks like. And, and know that some of this data that you're going to see is, 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 is cause for us to have a little bit of pause. And to see what we're doing and, and it's going to help guide us to make some significant. Some, I, I don't want to just say wholesale changes, but we're going to be making some adjustments to what we're doing based on the data that has been, been presented to our team. Specifically in the first grade, so that the majority of this presentation now is going to focus on first grade, because you'll notice that in our first grade. We do have, um. A much higher percentage of students. Uh, that are below benchmark in the middle of the year assessment than they were there in the beginning of the year. With that said, something I think that's important to point out. Is when we looked at this data from the student level. Every single student at Warren. Made growth with their composite score. There wasn't a single student who went down with the composite. So in other words, if a student scored at a three twenty, which would have listed them as, as well below benchmark. That's, no, no students scored at a three seventeen if they started at a three twenty. Everybody eventually moved up. However, some of those students who scored a three twenty one, for instance, may have only scored. A three sixty eight or a three seventy five. If they scored a three twenty one in the, in the beginning of the year and only a three seventy five. In the middle of the year, they would have gone from a below benchmark to a well below benchmark, even though they did make some composite growth. And when we looked closely at the data, what we noticed is that that had a lot to do with students who were struggling with correct letter sounds. So now we have a focused growth area that we're going to pay a lot of attention to. Um, our data team has, has, has delineated that as one thing that we are going to make a, a goal for the, for many students. And our teachers are well aware of that.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So does that then, does that instruction then happen in the general ed classroom or are those tier two support?
Both, both, depending upon the students, depending upon the specific needs. Uh, and depending upon the, um, specific groupings of that classroom, right? If we're talking about, uh, a, a classroom that has maybe eight or nine students, then that will be potentially a real tier one support. But if, maybe if it's just one student in that class, we may be tackling that at tier two, also depending upon what the dip was or what the drop is. Yeah. So the next slide shows you second grade, uh, again, um, second grade, much like kindergarten, had, had major, some major increases. As you can see, uh, well below benchmark went from twenty four percent to twenty one percent. We're obviously happy with that three percent decrease. And we're also, um, happy with an above benchmark going up five percent. And, you know, a- again with this, this demonstrates not only composite growth, but children are meeting, meeting the benchmark. Uh, which we're, which we're obviously thrilled with.
One of the things I think you kind of just said it a little bit is. Obviously the, the convergence on below benchmark, uh, in first grade was, was problematic, but. Uh, so you're happy with the three percent de, uh, decrease in the well below benchmark, but in general, are the. Growth numbers you're seeing aside from that one problem, problem area was, are they kind of. On point with what your target or expectations were for, for the growth for the students, like, uh, in, in those movements, right? You, you mentioned it for that one in particular, but, uh, in general, other than, uh, that one problem.
Yeah, so, so in, in first grade, I think that the two areas of weakness that we're really concerned about were, were the correct letter sound and the oral reading fluency. I, I believe that those are the, the two areas that we, we need to make sure that we did not make, we had to make better progress. We did not make expected progress in those areas. The other areas, for the most part, um, we're, we're basically on track with what we want. Yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, with the exception of, of, of some students, obviously, but for the, for the majority of the students that, that maybe have. Not gotten where we need them to go, it was, it was those two specific, those two specific subtests.
Just one other question, just seeing as I'm looking at the second grade number, I don't know if it's the same.
Yeah, second grade.
Oh, I was looking at it, just noticing the number of, of students. Who are assessed changes, right? Presumably people are out that day or whatever. So beginning of year, you have two thirty three out of two thirty five. Middle, you have two twenty six out of two forty six. I don't know if that.
Yeah, so I, we have, we have our folks here. I'm, I'm sure perhaps maybe Kate, Pete or Kathy can, can give some information.
Give to the enrollment.
As to, as to why, um, there is twenty, twenty out of, uh. Twenty out of the two hundred and forty six students in the second grade weren't assessed mid-year.
Yeah, so like Paul said, there's enrollment changes, um, and then, yes, students are out. There's a lot of different factors that play into that number.
I guess the question is, do we have any way of knowing whether or not that would make a material difference in the numbers of, at, below, well below? Cause you, you, you know the kids and sometimes. Kids who have, um, struggled performance also struggle with attendance, right? There's, can be a correlation there. Other times it could just be random, right? Or it could be enrollment dropped or whatever. But do you, when you look at those numbers. Does the, do you get concerned at all that, hey, maybe the numbers are worse or better? I mean, it could be, you wouldn't be concerned about that, but.
Um, so we take, Mike, Mike's going to go through the presentation, but we spent a lot of time digging deep into every single student at the Warren School. Determining exactly why they might have regressed, um, or not made the progress that we were looking for them to make.
But in addition, celebrating the gains that, that people making. With the students that are out though, it's important, just clarification, is if it's a child who's out for a day or a week because they're sick, once they come back, they go through the full assessment.
Okay.
Um, if a student is out of the country for several weeks, um, they're not included in this, as we don't have access to the children. Part of that number of what we're looking at, if, if someone is a non-English speaker, they're not included in this, as we're looking at different skills and measuring their growth in a different way.
That's helpful. Thank you.
One, one last question. This data is awesome and being able to get to the actual root cause via those six or seven is great. What communication is going to the parents after that assessment?
Good question. It's coming up, so, so. One of, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that you're aware of is that. I said it earlier, every student did make growth. While, while students did not meet the benchmark that we wanted. We're, we are seeing that all of our students are meeting growth and I think part of this is because of the tier one supports that are in place for all of our students. So in particular, uh, every day, every day, all students are getting ten minutes, whole class of Haggerty. Haggerty is a phonemic awareness program that we've adopted this year. Teachers have been trained. If you happen to have a moment in time, uh, at some point this year, I would encourage you to reach out to me. I would love for you to come in and we can set aside a, a quick walkthrough so you could see Haggerty in action. Uh, it's, it's incredible what the teachers are doing and it's only ten minutes. And, and from what I understand, the teachers are enjoying this piece and they are seeing the fruits of their labor. They're, they're, they're seeing the students, um, understand phonemic awareness in, in a different way than they ever had before. In addition, every single teacher is teaching twenty five minutes, whole class phonics, a foundations lesson this year. It's also something that's happening in every classroom with fidelity. So our teachers are teaching Haggerty and foundations. Every day, uh, thirty five minutes total combined between those two different programs. And this is something that has never happened with fidelity daily in Ashland. So, we're really excited about these two things being in place. We're confident that we are going to see growth in the areas that we, that we haven't seen yet based on those two things along with the many interventions that are being put in place because of the data team meetings. We've also implemented decodable readers. Teachers are providing whole class and small group lessons and interactive read alouds as well as vocabulary is a regular part of the instruction that's happening with our students on a daily basis.
I was just going to say about the decodable readers, I remember you letting us know about the great book room that you guys have established. Since all of the teachers are using Haggerty and presumably using these decodable readers with some of, do we have enough?
I, I think the answer is no. We never have enough.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have, you know, a suitable amount at this point to make sure everybody has access? Yes, but I don't think we ever have enough. And that's something that I'm sure Ms. Altman will come up and say that she wants more and maybe she'll say it publicly to put me on the spot. But, but these are things that we're talking about and these are things that we're make, we're going to be making conscious effort to increase specifically so we can get these in the hands of students on a regular basis whenever they need it. But at this point, we have what is appropriate, but we could use more. Is that fair?
Yes, that's my big goal right now, is to just keep increasing that. Summer, we built a whole entire section of our bookroom is now decodable readers leveled by grade level. So, teachers are accessing them on a daily basis. It's been wonderful to see it. It's been a huge success.
I love hearing that this is happening in every classroom and all the teachers are using this on a daily basis. And so, it, I think we need to make a priority to make sure that they have the tools they need to be able to actually implement it with fidelity because without those decodable readers, it's going to be a lot harder to do, so.
The question was, what's a decodable reader? You wanted to find a decodable reader for...
Yep, so if you think about phonics and like three-letter words, CVC words like cat, dog. So, those words that they're learning how to decode in the foundations program phonics are being applied into the decodable readers. So, they're, remember back in the like eighties and nineties, like Jane and Dick, those like little books that you could easily tap out the sounds of every single word in them. So, again, they're taking their skills, they're learning in foundations phonics and then applying it to the books because those are words in the book that they can decode easily.
So, are we also, because I, I use the one-two foundations curriculum myself when we homeschool for a year. So, are you using those books that actually come with foundations that like focus, have focus words from that specific section that they're going through?
So, we do have a whole set of the foundations decodable readers that teachers are accessing right now. And then we have decodable readers from other companies, but I'd love to expand that.
There's your free plug.
No, how many more do you want?
Oh, well, I think we need to do a little bit of more research on determining exactly like where we can get them, what we're looking for.
We just want more.
Exactly.
But just in that effort to get books in front of kids that they want to read, that they can read, that's going to keep them going too.
Correct, yes, correct.
Mike, you, you talked about sort of first time we're doing this nationally. I guess I'm curious. Just when you look at numbers like this, is there any utility in sort of sensing how we do compared to other districts? And is that something that's either knowable, shareable, something you talk about with other people?
I suppose that we could, I could, you know, do a little poll with some local districts who have, are also utilizing DIBELS to, to get their beginning and middle of the year data, to see where they are. It would certainly be interesting to find that out. What, what I'm more interested in is the fact that we have a baseline now for ourselves and that we can use this baseline data from this year and to see how we are progressing next year and years after. But, yeah, it's certainly something I could do, Mark, especially if you folks wanted us to...
Yeah, I'm not going to speak for the committee on that for sure. I just was curious as to whether or not there are sort of broader benchmarks of, as a district. I mean, you can look at, at what these data points are and say above benchmark, at benchmark. Ideally, you'd want to have a hundred percent above benchmark, right? In theory, but...
Several districts are using the DIBELS.
Yeah.
So, and I know that, you know, Kathy and Kate regularly meet with different groups regarding literacy. So, maybe if they even talk about that in their general, you know, jobalikes, that could be something that we could share in terms of some generalized data, like how your first grade as a whole do on your mid, middle of the year assessment to get an idea of where we are in comparison to others when it comes to our percentage of students that were meeting benchmark.
Are we using DIBELS as they get into Mendez as well or is it just early elementary?
So, right now, it's K to two. Next year, I believe, we'll be utilizing it in third grade. So, now it brings us up to the data team meeting process. And I, I had the privilege of, of, you know, witnessing one happen yesterday. And the conversations that are happening around student growth and student learning are fantastic. Just to be able to be a fly on the wall, to listen to teachers actually talking about data in a different way and truly having collaborative conversations with one another to ensure that every student is getting what they need was, was a pretty special experience. So, they meet five times a year to review the reading data for all students. And it should be known that a significant amount of work is happening behind the scenes between our literacy team even before these data team meetings happen. So, before the data team meetings happen, Kate, Kathy, they call them the Sues, are getting together, Sue Laracy, I'm sorry, Sue Malusi. Sue Laracy's no longer with us here and she's retired and we miss her every day. But Sue Malusi and Sue Nash are getting together with Kate and Kathy to discuss particularly the students who are, who have our most high needs, our highest needs kids, those kids who are in that red section for the most part. Every child is discussed, but those kids have a, have a little bit more that's happening with them. So, the student performance data is analyzed and every student has an individual learning goal. Even the students who are in grade, even those students are being discussed. Clearly, the students who are red are being discussed a little bit more in depth. But we're, we're making plans for all of our students. Instructional strategies determined for each student. They're adjusted continually. And you should know that the data is not limited to the, the data that's collected by Amplify or by DIBELS. Okay, we're utilizing, you know, some of our BAS data that we do have. Not every student is, gets a middle of the year score. That's why we're not reporting that out to you today. But we're looking at the Haggerty assessments that are done. We're looking at some of the everyday, just general assessments that's made by a teacher. If they're just making, if they're, if they're just, just seeing informal assessments that are happening within the classroom on progress. And what you should know is that parents are informed of their student progress. So, we are informing parents of their progress. If, if a student is receiving a particular plan or if a student has been, been deemed to have some, some serious needs, there's going to be a different level of information that's provided. But we are informing all parents about what's happening within, within the area of the growth that's necessary for, for these students.
Can I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Yeah.
When looking at the data, so the students that are in the yellow and the red.
Sure.
And you may not have this number off the top of your head, but...
You want me to go back?
No, no, no. No, just curious, do you have any, you know, are you able to give us any indication of how many of those kids are already identified as students with special education needs on IEPs or who are receiving tier three services?
So, I, the, the easy answer right now is not yet. But, but yes, it just depends on how we're doing it. So, we, we've got to determine with Amplify if there's a way to go into the system and enter that into their, into their data. It's not taking it directly. So, Kathy, is there a way, have you figured this out yet? Kate, come on up.
It's very easy.
Okay.
Choking. No, we just have to go back and the data that we entered, we didn't enter child, children on an IEP or their EL status. So, I talked to Amplify. We can do that now. It just, it's very time consuming, but we are hoping to have that. So, the end of the year results will include those different populations.
It was just kind of a helpful data point to know in terms of the students that we may not be surprised that they're in that, in that yellow or red right now, right? Many of them, I would assume, might be working on those skills as part of their special ed plan. But obviously, those who haven't already been identified.
It's, in my opinion...
How that plays into that, that process.
It's critical data to get.
Of course, yeah.
We, I, I'm glad to hear that it is easier than we thought, even though it is going to be a time consuming task. Because originally, we thought that perhaps it was going to be one of those things where we had to make our own separate spreadsheet and then put it in, which, which would have been...
A lot more work, yeah.
A little bit more work.
And the reports look amazing. Like, I was trying to get it to work, but then I contacted Amplify and they, we just don't have the information. But there's a whole other bottom part when you're doing, making reports. We can sort it in so many different ways once we have that information in there.
Amplify is the program you were showing us earlier this year, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then my other question was...
Well, no, no, no. I showed you Open Architects.
Open Architects, okay, sorry.
Amplify is the, is really the home for our DIBELS data.
Okay, okay, sorry. I'm getting all the systems confused.
That's okay. We're, we're doing a lot.
Yeah, you are. You certainly are, for sure.
There's a lot, yeah.
And we have that for free right now. We're on a trial for this year.
Okay.
So, we're not paying for it.
That's even better, but, yeah. The other quick question I had is, you know, the data teams meet five times a year. And so, looking at the, the DIBELS data specifically, there are three collection points. So, thinking through, what are, what's the data that's discussed at those other meetings? Is it, do you do the DIBELS again? Is it, is it classroom data that the teachers are collecting? What does that look like?
So, go, go ahead.
Okay, so they progress monitor. So, any child that is in red, they progress monitor three times. And per DESI, the children in red are progress monitored twice a month. The children in yellow are progress monitored once a month. That goes on to the data in Amplify. So, we can see their composite score and then their, what their progress monitor. And then when we meet again, we are just talking about the progress monitor students. And then after that, we have the benchmark again. So, they're being constantly, unfortunately, assessed.
Sure, yeah. In that progress monitoring, what tools are used to do that progress monitoring?
So, DIBELS, it's right in DIBELS, but as you're going to see on other slides, we are also, Haggerty has some amazing progress monitoring tools. And we are just starting to look at the Quick Phonics Screener as another tool. And they just revamped it. So, it has a quick spelling inventory, which then helps you place them in the decoding inventory so that we're going to have this encoding and the decoding.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are things that are actually, you're, you're giving us our next slide. So, yeah, no, it's great. This is good.
I think it's straight, Paul. You have the next question. Come on, it's going to be answered later.
Yeah, so, it, we're identifying their needs. So, students, and students who are identified as needing tier two intervention are provided with small group instruction. So, there are other diagnostic assessments that are being utilized. They're listed here. So, you, you have our students that are doing the Quick Phonics Screener, the QPS. We have the Haggerty, the phonemic awareness assessment that's happening. Our literacy specialists are consulting with grade level teachers. Depending upon the need of the student and the level of the student, either weekly or bi-weekly, and they're reviewing the progress, right? They're, they're reviewing the progress, progress that they're making in the classroom and that is helping to adjust the interventions accordingly. So, classroom teachers are providing regular interventions during small group focused instruction for each of these different students. And then that progress monitoring that Kathy was talking about is happening on a regular basis as well. That's bi-weekly or monthly for any student who is in that yellow or red category.
I know I'm asking a lot of questions, but I have one more.
Yeah, yep, go ahead.
I love seeing the high numbers of students we have in our above benchmark space. And so, what are, I mean, obviously, we've been talking about the interventions we're putting in place for the kids that need to catch up. But for those kids that are above benchmark, what are we doing to help them continue to grow or to, really to stay engaged in the process?
So, I actually have met with a couple of teachers that have asked me to come into their rooms that have children that are above grade level. So, when they're pulling small groups, what could they do with those students? Because they don't necessarily need all of this. So, we worked on critical thinking, different things they can do with vocabulary. Our interactive read alouds are every day for twenty minutes where we are really practicing that vocab and that critical thinking. So, besides the Haggerty and the foundations, there's an interactive read aloud every single day, K through two. And as teachers come to me more, like, I'm hoping that I can get into more classrooms. But they're doing amazing things. So, the small groups aren't just about the phonics. They are meeting with comprehension groups and they are meeting with vocabulary groups. They're not meeting with them five days a week. We've also are trying to, the independent reading time is becoming more focused. Those higher level kids are being asked to produce something during independent reading. So, they're being asked to either, what was the theme? Give us some evidence, things like that. So, we are slowly working that in for those students.
Yeah, to kind of follow up on that, I guess, the question, a question I would have is similar in that if you have someone who started off above benchmark, are we identifying, hey, you didn't, you, you only grew twenty points. You're still in that, in that spectrum, but you didn't have, like we talked about CPI, you didn't have a full year's worth of growth. You didn't, which looks like on the second grade is sixty, you know, was sixty points in the DIBELS, was roughly sixty or sixty-two would be what the, what the increase was. And if they're not, yes, they're still in the same area, but they, they didn't, they didn't grow the same amount. Are we identifying them and saying, hey, we, we clearly didn't, didn't provide the enrichment we needed for, for those students?
So, when, when we're looking at the, and you'll see, you'll see an example of a, of a student data report that you actually get to look at. So, you would be able to keep track of that. So, if you, and, and, you know, there's different scores that are provided and the DIBELS actually says that you're not supposed to put too much weight on the composite growth score. And it's funny, we were having this conversation yesterday because, you know, I talk about growth all the time and I drive them crazy about one year's worth of growth and what is that an equivalent to? And we, I think we sort of got to determine exactly that issue for the students who are above grade level is what is the composite growth score that would be appropriately correlated to one full year's worth of growth?
It may not be one data point, right?
Right, so there's, there's things that we have to find out. And essentially, what we've got to make sure is those students are ending above. And in the, and again, the yard marker changes when they go to the next grade level. So, it will be very interesting for us to look at the data that comes from the beginning of the year, say, in first grade for those above grade, above benchmark students to see how they are now testing when they get to the beginning of the year in second grade. So, have they started above benchmark in, in first and then landed above benchmark as well in second? I think that's going to be a really good indicator to see, are we on the right track with what's happening with those kids in particular? Kathy, they can't hear you.
We just had that happen at a data team meeting as one of our kindergarten students was their green, her green score fell below what it was. So, we noticed that the phonemic awareness score also fell. So, I was able to do the Haggerty phonemic awareness assessment and we pinpointed exactly where she needed the instruction. I met with the teacher. The teacher knows the two areas that she needs to be focused on. That's what her intervention will be. So, we are looking at that too, not just the students in red and, and yellow.
So, this next slide is a, I, I think it's one of the best things that we have and it's, you know, kudos to Kathy for putting this together. It's, what can we learn from the data? You know, obviously, data doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot if you're not actually looking at it and analyzing it and coming up with a plan.
Was, was that in the one you sent us?
No, no, this is something that, this is something that was sent later and I apologize. This is, this is, this was added, this was added today. Because I, I said to Jim, you're getting hot off the press information here because our, our middle of the year assessment window really just ended less than a week ago. So, this is, this is, this is really a work, real-time data and essentially a work in progress. But when you take a look, we're able to, to pinpoint which subtests our students are struggling in. So, you'll notice in letter naming fluency, right? And what it does, it assesses a student's ability to identify individual letters, but it's how fast they can identify these individual letters. You see that there, from the beginning of the year, there were only twenty percent of the students that were, that were falling well below and it's twenty-six percent of students. Well, what can we do? So, we have, we have a way to adjust instruction. There's a table now that we can follow. We can, and we look along and there are specific activities that can happen. Continue small group instruction for students. Identify which letters a student does not know, have a rapid naming chart, practice that. Do foundations letter lessons in the Fun Hub. So, our teachers get to see this and say, okay, I know how I can attack this problem for these particular students. And then we have a plan to progress monitor those students. DIBELS two times a month for the students in red, one times a month for students in yellow. And they will all get the Haggerty assessment as well for, for that particular area. And, and we have that for each of the different subtests. So, and, and right now, this has been completed for first grade as well as kindergarten. So, and right now, this has been completed for first grade as well as kindergarten, and the work is being done to see what we can do now for our second graders as well. And everybody will be able to follow this as, again, sort of a roadmap, right? A roadmap to success for all of our staff. So here's one of those sheets that I was talking, this is what you actually see. So this is that data, that data set that is supplied from Amplify. And this is one of the things that is looked at and analyzed during those data meetings. So teachers will look at this data to determine their focus for the instruction used in different decision areas. For this particular student, you'll notice, they started the year at 318, which is well below. That's a pretty significant growth, it's plus 67 for their growth, and that's well above average in terms of the growth for our students at this point. And they moved into the 385, but they're still below. Well, what specific subtests is this student struggling with the most? You can take a look right quick and know that phonemic awareness, they still are well below. So that's a focus area for this particular first grader. They're still below in letter sound, they're still below in reading accuracy, and they're still below in reading fluency. So those are the areas that our teachers are gonna focus on and come up with a plan based on that. There's another piece that is using, because this is the progress towards the current year. They're also, at the same time, looking at the previous year's information, because we have a lot of different data sets now. So you wanna see this performance to examine if there's any trends. So for this particular child, they, in kindergarten, you can see where they were. So it's just important to be able to know that we're looking at all of the data that's presented to us before we're making any kind of decisions. So, you saw this before, last year we introduced this. This is that decision tree, and the decision tree essentially helps us to inform all of our decisions that are made when it comes to the types of interventions and supports that a student might get. So I'll take you along one student, for example. If a student is on or above benchmark in phoneme segmentation fluency, you're gonna go to step 2. Or if they're below benchmark, they're gonna get supplemental instructional focus for phonemic awareness, and that's gonna be how we're tackling that issue. So we're going through this, it's a bit confusing at first glance, but if you take a good look at it, it really gives you a nice roadmap to success for all of our students, but it also gives you a roadmap for all of our staff to be able to say, okay, I see the problem area, I see where the subtests, the weaknesses were. This gives me exactly what I need to know to focus on these areas, and here's my plan of attack for this particular child. I'm gonna call Kate up to talk about this next piece, because this is really a critical component, and Kate can speak to it, as she's really a part of the process, and she's living it. So you wanna talk about progress monitoring?
Yes, so as Mike said, there's a lot of work that goes into all of this prior to the data team meetings with the teachers. I sit with the Sues and Kathy, and we go through every single student at the Warren School, analyze all of their data, determine which students we wanna flag, because they either regressed, or there was an area they really did not do well in. Using the decision tree, we determine what further assessments we wanna do on them, depending on where their weakness fell. So if it was the phonemic awareness area, we would most likely do a HEGERTY. And we document it on a spreadsheet, so that I myself can keep track of these kids that scored red or yellow, and we flagged as potential concerns. And then I frequently look at it throughout the year to monitor how they're progressing. So this is just something we do prior to the data team meetings. Once we have further information from those assessments that we do, we bring it to the data team meetings, and it's just additional assessment information that we provide the teachers with, so that they can create an appropriate action plan and set targeted goals for those kids, based on not only the DIBELS data, but the additional assessments that we use on them.
This is the sheet that gets ultimately filled out during those data team meetings. So this is that planning sheet for teachers. And you can see there's specific data associated with the child. This is that prior year data, that's just this part of it. But what they do is they set a specific goal. So what's the goal, then what's the plan? And by the time they leave that meeting, they are determining how often they're gonna meet with a small group, what the action plan is gonna be for each student in their classroom. Yesterday was really interesting, because there was a conversation that was happening between Kate Bauer and Sue Malusi, and they were talking about a particular child. And they said, well, I think that even though they had this specific weakness, they already had a different weakness that they wanted to work on. They said, oh, they really fit well with this group, I think we have to make sure we get them into both of these groups. So this student will be a two times 10 with this, and then a five times 10 with this group. And they were having those real-time conversations, and getting down to the fact that we have a specified plan now, that's still tier-one intervention for every one of these kids, because it's happening in the classroom with small group. It's impressive to see it happen, and the action plans are what they leave with. This is more of the planning sheet, so how many students are in a group? What is that group goal? What do they want to have that group accomplish in a specific time set that they're making? And then what's the schedule? And then they keep their notes. They're being helped, you know, there's an accountability structure here, because when we're meeting for the next set of data teams, we wanna know what has gone on. And, you know, Kate is checking in with teachers, and Kate is checking in about student progress, and Kathy is walking in observing student progress. Pete is asking people about what is happening, and they're keeping track of it on their planning sheet. So we're actually having anecdotal notes being taken about the student progress in the days that they're met, and, you know, what exactly is being done. Essentially, to sum this all up, there's a tremendous amount of collaboration that's happening right now. Kudos to our staff. I mean, this, I was, I can't say enough how impressed I was with the work that was done yesterday. Our second-grade team was being so thoughtful, and the conversations were rich. And everybody is in this right now with the idea that we are using this data to drive our instruction, and we know how we need to attack it for certain students. It's best practices, it's people working together with the ultimate goal of making sure that our kids become, you know, true readers, right? Lovers of reading, and that's what we wanna do. And I just, I'm thrilled, and I can't thank enough Kathy and Kate and Pete and their staff for the amount of work that they're putting into this, it's a tremendous amount of work. And, you know, these four words here is what we're doing, right? We're instructing, we're assessing, we're refining, we're assessing, and then we repeat, right? So it's, let's just get this going until we ensure that all students are where we want them to be, with the ultimate goal of everybody being on benchmark. Hopefully, we kinda answered most of your questions. If you have some others, please, you know, feel free. We've got these folks here, they can answer these things far better than I. And again, just, we're so grateful to have such a great team, that we're really lucky. And I'm thrilled that, you know, they're working so hard to make this happen for our kids. Questions?
I have another question. First, thank you guys, to you and to your staff, obviously. You all and the teachers are clearly putting in a lot of time and effort and work to move this forward. And it sounds like you're gathering amazing information to be able to really target instruction to what all of your students need. So kudos to all of you, because it's a lot of work. So it's great to see it all really coming to fruition. But the question that I have is, this is obviously a huge piece of our K-2 literacy, but we have another piece, the Lucy Cawkins part. And so, you know, some of the criticism that you hear about Lucy Cawkins is that some of the way that the program is traditionally structured, and I know we've kind of made our own tweaks to it, right? But the way that the program is traditionally structured can sometimes undermine some of this great work. So I'm curious to hear how we're using Lucy Cawkins. What are the tweaks that are in the instruction? And how are these all entwined together? Or are they each their own separate pieces? I'm assuming no, but I'm really curious to kind of hear how it all fits together.
So I'm gonna start, and maybe let Kathy or Kate or Pete, you know, jump in. One of the things that I have made, I have made Kathy's life incredibly difficult. And I think sometimes she doesn't ever wanna meet with me, because she knows every time she meets with me, she has a new task on her plate, specifically in the area of almost reinventing some of the units. The amount of work that has gone in to us adjusting some of the teaching methodologies that we're asking teachers to do, based on the fact that we do not wanna have contradictory approaches in our literacy instruction, has been immense. Kathy has taken this on with the assistance I know of Kate and Pete, but she's taken it on, and then she has, I don't wanna say rewritten, but adjusted some of the units to ensure that they're fitting our philosophy of Ashland literacy instruction, with Cawkins as our baseline, without some of those classic Cawkins techniques, right? We've talked about the fact that we're not playing a guessing game here, okay? We are not going to undermine the 35 minutes of phonemic awareness work that's happening on a daily basis due to the Clocker Cocktail for Literacy that we have created. It's not going to happen. And with that comes a tremendous amount of time and effort. There's some professional learning that has to occur there. There's some sort of reteaching that has to take place before units. But there's a general understanding that what we are doing and what we are putting into place is what is best for kids. I don't know if you wanna add to that, Kate? Pete, looks like Pete's chomping at the bit here.
Thank you, Mike.
He loves talking about it.
So, as Mike said, really kudos to Kathy, who was putting countless hours on this. And what she's done is she's reviewed all of the units of study, and found all the places where there was conflict. And she's taken those out, and she gave a replacement to our staff. She worked with our staff, made sure that they understood the changes, why we were making the changes, and supported them by actually going into modeling lessons as well. What helped us is so many of our teachers have already taken the course, Shifting the Balance. Kathy's also leading a book club that is meeting and discussing this as well. So our staff was primed and ready, and again, that's a compliment to their professionalism, that they understood that there were problems with the units. And they were ready to make these adjustments, ready to take these changes. Kathy took some of the revisions, as it's been revised in the program, and took some of those elements and incorporated those as well with the shifts and changes that she made for us that match up to the research that's available now, and to make sure that it's matching for our students, and our students are not getting mixed messages. We've removed those pieces, and probably, what I would say is the biggest area where that's most notable is in our kindergarten units that are being taught right now. And that was part of the timing of this, where it was so critical that we got this into the teacher's hands before they were using archaic methods.
Well, kudos to all of you. I mean, that's not a small undertaking to do, and so, thank you. I think you guys are putting in place, you all have, and Mike, you included in being part of the team, put in place methods to make all of our kids stronger readers. And so, thank you, because it's no small task what you have undertaken and implemented in terms of not just picking a curriculum to use, but developing a program. I like how you called it the Clocker Cocktail, Mike, I like that, the Clocker Cocktail for reading. Like, it is a very individualized approach that many districts don't take. And so, I'm really excited to follow the data as these kids, you know, kind of move up through grades, because I think we're gonna see some really great strides in our kids' reading. But thank you to all of you, because it's not lost on me, and I'm sure the rest of the committee, how much work you've put into this.
Yeah, this is really awesome.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my observation is that, you know, we talk so much during our strategic planning discussions and retreats about really focusing on each individual kid. And here's a great example of really making use of technology and assessments, and really making sure every kid's getting exactly what they need, and that's just great to see.
Yeah, I just wanna echo, thank you for all the hard work, and, but also, I think we'd be remiss, we have Kate here...
I was gonna say the same thing.
To congratulate her, she was named the MSAA Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year, so well deserved with all the work you've done, and congratulations again.
Thank you so much, thank you all.
Thank you. Let me just see, Florrie, anything that you have, Florrie, before we move on? You're all good? Okay. All right, thank you all, and I'm sure you wanna say goodnight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking with us.
Thank you very much for being here.
Great work. All right, so I think we're to the five-year capital plan. Chris?
Yes.
Jim, are you gonna leave that off?
Yeah, I'll share. Yeah, no, I asked Chris and John to come tonight and present the process that the town has undertaken with the schools as well, and other departments, on our capital plan for the next five years, and what they have to submit to the town, and the process that will be undertaken as we move forward, and the priorities that Chris and John and their team put together for capital items. Chris, do you want me just, I have the spreadsheet up, you want me to share that as a screen?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would be helpful.
Yep, that'd be great. Pull that up.
John, if you're gonna speak, why don't you come in here?
And then, yeah, thanks, John, for being patient tonight while we went through all that other stuff as well.
He brought a ruler.
He was very interested in all the early elementary literacy conversations we had.
I'm sure he may have been out sanding this morning at 4:00 AM, so.
Lot of progress at Warren's.
Right, exactly. We're not canceling school because it's cold, either. Chris, can you see that okay, so if you wanna go through that?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so this is something that we look at every year, we look at a five-year plan. I just wanna kind of give a 30-second high-level overview of, A, what we're looking at, but B, also what the process is and why we're doing it, and the time that we're doing it. So Town Hall asked for this information to be presented to them. Generally speaking, we've had capital funds that all departments within the town request money for. There's usually, roughly speaking, about 500K that the towns are kind of, you know, advocating for, you know, town departments are advocating for. So you'll look to see that what's in front of you for fiscal '24 is a very large number. Other departments likely have large numbers as well. I don't know if they're to this number, or less or more, but I just, I guess my point of bringing this up is that two things generally happen. You know, this is a fluid document, so do I expect 3.7 million to be all funded in fiscal '24? Likely, the answer is no to that. But it's, it would be, I don't think, it wouldn't be justice if we didn't present it as, hey, look, this is what, if we, this is what we would like, this is what we need in fiscal '24, should the resources be available. And it's very much understood that, you know, this is...
It's trying to make sure you're asking your two look nicer, right? Will you drop it by 3 million dollars?
Okay, so, once we get into this, so this is a capital plan as, you know, as presented, understanding that there are enormous, you know, processes and funding mechanisms that would need to take place for this to actually materialize. With that said, the lion's share of this is roofing, turf, and, I mean, honestly, that's a larger share in a facility's location that we've been discussing over the past couple of years. So I don't know how much time you've spent looking at this. John's here to speak to the, you know, specifics on some of the projects. I'm happy to speak to them as well. I just, it's a snapshot of where we would like to be in a five-year period, in an ideal funding situation.
Why don't we start by asking John if he has anything he wants to add? Just as an introductory comment?
No, I don't, I think I covered it well, thanks.
Okay.
And Chris, so, this is capital plan, certainly a default funding source is the capital budget, right? From the town side, but some of these things might also, you'd get it from grants or different other things that you could apply for, right? So...
So the answer to that is yes. Usually what we would do, though, in a situation like that, if we knew we were gonna fund something from a grant, why don't we use the boilers as a good example at Pittaway? Last year, we were hoping that the Pittaway boilers would be able to be split-funded. I can't remember, John, if you know, off the top, you had a 60-40 or something to that effect, right? So we would've put on the capital plan 250K, knowing that the boilers are gonna come in at, you know, 500K, but it was a 50-50 split. So if we know it's gonna be grant, or we hope it's gonna be grant, you know, we'll present it as such, but it would be the caveat that, you know, 250K, understanding that the project's 500K.
So is everything on here, you know, the number... So, is everything on here, you know, the numbers are just the projects, or are they in any way augmented to reflect only the ask to the capital budget?
This would be the ask for the capital budget.
Okay.
Or a discussion point for if other funding sources are available.
Real, yeah, okay.
And understanding too, if we are able to manage through some of it, like, you know, exterior lighting study, it's twenty-five K. If other funding is identified, of course, we take that off the capital plan and be able to do it with something else, other funding. But right now, at this point in time, it's, you know, this is a capital funding request.
So, Paul, to that extent as well, I'll just chime in, Chris, I apologize, that, you know, as we work through our process, even with, say, the fiscal year twenty-three budget, and we're looking at our potential, if there are potential savings throughout the year, and at the end of the year, we've got an opportunity for a Warren carpet replacement, say, for seventeen thousand, that we could fund and actually have, because technically we have to have the installation begun before the end of the fiscal year to utilize those funds, then, you know, we would be able to pull that out of that, the capital plan. So, like Chris said, it's a fluid document right now, because we don't know where we are in terms of potential savings, projects that we budgeted for this year that may not get done due to a variety of factors. So, those are things that I look at and say, you know, Chris and John, keep me in loop and say, Jim, we can move forward with this project for FY twenty-four in FY twenty-three funding, so.
The other thing, question is, funding's one component of it. I know capacity's another, right?
Correct. Exactly.
You know, so, say we had, you know, some very rich person say, yeah, I can, I'll give you, I'll give you three-point-five million dollars.
Yep.
My guess is, you'd be like, crap, now we gotta try to, try to actually, you know, have the capacity to manage-
That's literally what he's gonna say.
And I'm looking at you, John, because you're looking at me like-
Verbatim.
Yeah. So, I assume that there's, that those are another variable that's in there, that even if we were to be, you know, given three-point-seven million dollars, that we'd have capacity challenges to try to do, do all of that and manage all those projects as well, right?
That is correct.
Tina, Aaron, you have anything? No? So, I guess, Chris, I guess my biggest question is about sort of what causes something to be put, particularly in the FY twenty-four budget, like, I can see the other things you can sort of say, okay, there's a cycle here or something like that. But I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is how urgent are all the FY twenty-four things, right? So, roof replacements, you know, can be a little dripper, you could have a flood in a building, right? The, I'm looking at the Warren, remove the underground storage tank, like, is it full of something? Is it leaking? Is it, you know, can you give us maybe a little bit of a sense of some of what the consequence might be of not doing some of these in FY twenty-four as opposed to FY twenty-five, particularly the ones that are most concerning to you?
Sure. So I know, let's, we'll talk about the roofs first. So the roofs are, this is the first time that, you know, over the past couple of years, we've had patchwork on the roof, you know, and, you know, it's been funded, fifty K here, eighty K there, and John and his team have been doing a great job keeping it where we need it to be. At this point in time, we needed to have it on a plan and then start to prioritize, all right, is it doable in fiscal twenty-four? Should we start to plan it? What makes sense? So, you know, can that go to fiscal twenty-five? I'd say that, you know, we have guys out there right now, or team, you know, companies out there right now, looking at, looking at the roof, they're assessing it with the funds that we have for this year to figure out how to kind of patch it. So I think that, honestly, and I want John's opinion on this too, to, you know, at this point, it's on fiscal twenty-four because it's a point of discussion that it's necessary enough for us to get it in front of everybody and then really start to prioritize what we want to do with it. For the roof part, do you have a sense of urgency that you want to?
Well, I think we look at urgency, is it adversely affecting the students? And when we have active leaks in classrooms where teachers are trying to present and you have a leak right in front of a projector, it's just not acceptable. So, we need to resolve that. And the way we have been doing it is trying to chase these leaks, but we have a rubber roof at the high school over a majority of it. And you can have a rip a hundred feet away and it travels all along the roof, so it's really hard to identify. I guess it was in, what, two thousand and fifteen, where we had significant snowfall, where they sent people up there to shovel the roofs and they did a lot of damage to them. So, we have a roughly twenty-year-old roof, which would be coming to the end of its life cycle anyway. So, in the two, three separate vendors now that I've had go up and take a look at the roof, and I do have a drone flight scheduled over it. As soon as we get a, the right fluctuation in temperature, they're gonna thermal scan it for me. And then where they see the hotspots, that's where we know the air is coming out, and then we know where all the holes are. So, I do have capital money to approach it that way. And there are a couple of ways that we can look at the roof as a total replacement or maybe more of a restoration, where they rip it all up and then they look and see what's salvageable that's there. Like, why replace insulation if it's good? It's better, from an environmental standpoint, for us to maybe look at salvaging a lot of what's there now before we just say, let's just rip it all off and throw a new roof down. So, I think the sixty thousand that we have this year to address the roof at the high school will be more than enough to give us a good indicator of what we're looking at, you know, if we have to bump this to twenty-five or twenty-six or whatever. I have money right now to put sort of Band-Aids on it, and then, as Chris and I discussed earlier today, you know, getting a statement of work for a million-dollar roof is an undertaking in and of itself to ensure that we get specifically what we want. And I'm not underselling myself, but I don't feel like I'm in a position to, you know, do that on my own and say, you know, this is exactly, I'd rather some structural engineer or something like that, we get some help and have that thing drawn up, so we get exactly what we need.
Well, and particularly with roofs, I don't know if the market's changed, right? So, I know with Mindes, when we had to go out and get those numbers, but the numbers were fictitious, basically, right?
We're gonna have like fifteen dollars a square foot in some cases.
But because the contractors weren't getting real numbers from the suppliers, so they were, you know, so, I don't know if you get a sense for, has that changed, right? So, part of me is, is like, if we have the ability to take money and get it and push us out to a point where that settles down, because I know in twenty-twenty-one, it was literally as bad as our Mindes estimate, it was fifty percent over budget.
For the roof, yeah?
Just the roof. It was, it was a one-point-one million dollar estimate came in, or two-point-two million dollar estimate came in, one-point-one over. And that number was just made up, because the challenge then was, these lead-time issues, the manufacturers weren't actually giving the contractors the price until it shipped, and it was like nine months' lead time. So they were just kind of making up a number that, you know, managed their risk, right? And so, I don't know if that's calmed down and is a better spot, but that gives me a lot of pause to overpaying for a roof if we can, especially one that, yes, we did, obviously did some damage to it, but it shouldn't be like, hey, at year twenty, the thing needs to be gutted, right? It should exceed its warranty and life expectancy to some extent.
And properly maintained.
Right.
And I don't believe it was. So what we had was a lot of shingles, the asphalt portion of the roof with it shingled, those, shingles had blown off over the years and they were never replaced. So then we sustained damage.
Sheathing in and out.
Yeah, so we went up, I had all the asphalt shingles that we could identify that had blown off replaced, and then we put, I think, twenty patches on it over the last six months. So we're, you know, and then we got more money for this year to, again, continue with that, but after speaking with Chris, it's like, how often are we gonna throw fifty thousand at it when maybe it's time? And then we'll ensure, because I have the warranty on that roof, and the warranty was very clear on what the expectation was to maintain that warranty.
Right.
And it just fell through the cracks and, you know, obviously, we won't let that happen if we get one now, but I don't think, even if it still fell under the warranty, that they would honor it, just based on the fact that, you know.
So, I guess, Chris, why don't you continue on with the other things? And I'm curious, except the risk with the underground storage tank?
Yeah, so I wanted to chat through that, too. So the first challenge we had with that was just trying to figure out how to get what was in the tank out of the tank. So, working through that.
Where is it?
It's at the Warren School.
Yeah, but like, where?
What is it?
It's, so, I don't want to say randomly, but, you know, essentially, we find, we now understand that there is a tank that we have underground that we need to have addressed and take the-
So it's not something that's been used, it's just been sitting there for years?
No, well, no, it's, we haven't, this is, John, you have the date of when that thing may have been utilized, but we're talking years ago.
Is it like a fuel tank?
Yes, oil. It's oil.
Is there oil in it?
There's oil in it, so we're working through the logistics on how to get that oil out and, which is a multi-step process in itself, because of the value of the oil and, you know, there's just-
Turned out to be a good investment.
But what's not a good investment is, you know, we essentially, we're still doing our due diligence, but we own taking it out. And that's, you know, there are laws in place and things that we need to-
How do we, how do we, how do we come to identify that it was even there if we didn't know before?
I'm gonna defer a colleague over here.
I'm sorry.
I'm deferring you to give that history on that.
We have alarms on that tank, and one of the alarms went off, and I had not heard that alarm before. So, it was a leak detection alarm. I spoke with the head custodian, I said, I'm not even familiar with, because we're on natural gas, the boilers there run on natural gas, so why would we have a full tank of heating oil out in the parking lot? And I didn't know why that would be there, so I wasn't looking for it. I saw the alarm, they told me, oh yeah, that goes off every once in a while, like, if we have, the trash truck might drive over it and compress it a little bit, so I wasn't worried specifically about it actually leaking, because they said it's usually coincides with something driving over it. So, I went out and took the sticks and stuck the tank, and it read ninety-nine, and I think it's a fifteen-thousand-gallon fiberglass tank that we have there. So we had fresh heating oil in there, so I went through our orders and we found in two thousand and sixteen, I believe it was, we had five-thousand gallons of fuel oil delivered there that was never used, so it just sat there. So clearly, there was some oversight when it was ordered, because we had already transitioned to gas at that point.
Somebody clearly was making investments.
It might have been on auto-deliver or something like that.
Right, it could have been.
Or Amazon.
But I don't know why it was not properly identified at that point.
Right, right.
Because the law states that if we have an abandoned tank, we have to remove it unless it messes with the structural integrity of the building that it supports. This one was put in after the building was already up, so that is not a factor, so we have to get it out, so.
Is there, is there a timeframe where that becomes, you know, like, we incur some kind of penalty or sanction for that now that we've identified it, or?
I'm not sure. I spoke with Clean Harbors and they seem to have almost a monopoly on the UST removal business. So, they said that the law states, if you can get it out, you gotta get it out. I talked to the guy, I said, okay, I'm gonna get the oil taken out of it and then I'll work with a vendor to have it removed. He said, all the vendors that do it in Massachusetts work under the Clean Harbors umbrella, so ultimately, we'll just have one of them come in, but he said, if you get the oil out of there and we test it and it's good, you're better off doing that as opposed to if I come in, I'm treating it all as hazmat and you're gonna have to pay to take it all the way as hazmat. So I've spoken to a few local oil vendors, and they're very interested in having that oil. So what Chris and I have been talking through, and I spoke with OIG or OSD on the procurement side, and they did return my phone call on the question, because Chris suggested that I call the state and get specific clarification on-
Reverse procurement?
Yeah. So we contacted them, and they basically said, based on the procurement dollar threshold is how you're going to deal with it. If we got five-thousand gallons in there, most of the oil companies, they showed me their invoices, they're paying two-ninety-nine for it and they're charging about four-fifteen. So they said they'd pay us about two-fifty per gallon, and that would include testing and removal. So, I'll put it out through the proper procurement way and then get the best offer for the town, have it removed, get the check for whatever the balance is, and then start moving to have that tank.
So we just paid for the concrete resurfacing of the entryway at the Warren School. Ten thousand dollars.
And we'll look at, you know, I mean, you know, what it takes to get it out and making sure that we're understanding the process and the guidance that we have to follow to do so.
And is there any danger in leaving it there? Like, how emergent will it be to take it out once it's empty?
I didn't think it rose to the level of an emergency procurement where I would have, if it was leaking. I stuck those tanks every day for about three weeks, and I never were stalled. So, if we were leaking at all, I'd consider it an emergency and I would have it taken out. I got Jamie Oil, local, he's ready to go at a moment's notice to get it out of there, so in the event, while we're going through this process, now I'm only, I think I've, I don't think I've stuck that tank in probably about three weeks. I'll do it again, and if it is low, then I will just initiate something I think we can justify, then that would be an emergency, so.
So is the hundred thousand an estimate, or is it, at least somebody gave you a ballpark of, hey, once you got it out, you know?
Yeah, I think I pulled out the invoice of what the last one that we took out was, and it was like seventy grand or something like that. And then I asked Clean Harbors, I said, am I with it empty? And he said, it's not gonna be empty, because the company's gonna leave the sludge at the bottom.
Right.
So he said, you're gonna have to deal with some of the sludge and then the removal. He said, send me a picture of where it's at. He said, that wasn't a really challenging area to get it out of, so he didn't anticipate it to be a really, you know, we're not having to take a crane over the building and lift it up and carry it over, they can literally pull it out with a backhoe, throw it in the back of a flatbed and go. So he thought a hundred thousand seemed like a reasonable number.
Okay. I have just one more question, just about the status of the turfs. I mean, it's a million-dollar ask for the high school, middle school fields. You know, I've certainly spent enough time watching football games at the high school field, and I don't, I know that they have a life expectancy, and I know that I think both of these are beyond it, but is there a safety risk there to people utilizing those fields? I know they're in heavy use, both of them are.
So, my understanding is there's tests that have to be done on those fields to determine the safety risk. I'd honestly probably defer that question, so I could do a little bit more research on it before I, you know, respond with more, you know, a better answer, other than, this has been talked about-
For a while.
For a while, through different boards and/or different, you know, discussion points. When I brought it up, you know, Steve Marks, what are we looking at for the capital this year? That was one of the first things out of the gate. You see the other ones that he, he's recommended too. So, I do think that there are safety requirements that need to be met for the fields to be operational. I'll get more information on that for you.
Yeah, I guess, I said one, I'll ask one more, which is just, how much of this, of these capital projects might be subject to financing rather than paying out of capital? Because I know the town, kind of, when they did their capital study a couple of years ago, got some direction about what types of capital should be paid as you go versus financed.
So, that's a good question, and I think that it's more of a timing issue for this of when the town is looking to figure out what they want to do for their, or what we're presenting for the capital plan versus what they have the capacity to do for, for debt versus free cash, for any other mechanism that they might have to fund it. So I don't think that we're in a position, I'm definitely not in a position right now to say, yes, this is, this is debt. I think the finance director, once she fully understands what the overall position is for capital asks and priorities and what her existing debt structure is, then that, I think, is the time that I'd be able to comment more or have them comment a little bit more on the debt.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just on the middle school exterior lighting one, Mike, didn't it the Safety Committee Chief Rossi talk about federal grants for safeties, some safety stuff right now that are kind of waiting for people to go after them? Like, could that, just that one element? Because if the lighting is under the-
The field study?
Yeah. Yeah, if it's under, like, you know, um. From a safety perspective of lighting up certain areas and whatnot, like could we use one of those grants that, that Chief?
We're all ears to hear, uh, that, yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be certainly interested, um, if there's, there's grant funding available for it, we're certainly, uh, interested in looking into it.
We, yeah, we can certainly take a look at that, we could add it to the next safety committee agenda to see if there's a particular grant that could be available to help us pursue some. Some money for lighting.
Anything else on the?
We may want to present that to the community before we install the lighting, so, uh. I'm having, I'm gun shy about lighting.
You tired of getting yelled at?
A little tired of the emails, yeah.
So Jim, are we looking for anything by way of a vote on the capital plan, it's just an update, right?
No, I, just an update, I just wanted them to give you an idea of, of, uh, stuff we're presenting. Again, it, it's the, it's, it's an iterative process, right? It, it's, just because we have a list doesn't mean what's on F Y twenty-four is gonna stay there. Um, I think by putting it in F Y twenty-four, it's, these are the most critical components. Um, that we want to be looked at, to mark your question about the turf. It's, it's the G max testing is what they do each year, uh, which is for concussion protocol to ensure that, that they're safe. Uh, so we have to go through that process every single year, uh, so the turfs have not, you know, have continually passed, so they're, they're fine to be on. Um, and if they didn't pass the G max testing, uh, we wouldn't be able to utilize them, so.
You see those little black beads that bounce up in the N F L when they, you know, they spread those around in the compression test to see what.
Yeah.
Pressure rating it is and they have a formula around the field of where they do it, so.
Lori, anything from you?
She's shaking her head.
Okay, all right, um, we got a couple of things left on our agenda, one is.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, John.
Oh, thank you. I'll ensure I have, I, I'm having installer joystick, I can point the lights at New Mendez up.
Can I aim them all at that house?
No, no.
You're on camera and being recorded, so behave yourself.
She's actually very nice, it's just I understand their frustration, it's, uh. Just, I think we're being reasonable, but that's me.
Yep.
Mr. Adams, your mid-cycle update on superintendent goals?
Sure, do you want to do an easy one first? Um, no. So, yeah, each year, um, and I apologize, I, I did send this out, um, this afternoon and I, I. Have an opportunity just to, to fill you in as to where the goals are and what we've done, what we've accomplished. Uh, how I feel like, you know, we're progressing or not progressing on, on certain aspects of the goals and, um, you know, I, I think. It is something I'll present tonight, but if you have questions and you want me to expand upon it in the next meeting or another meeting, I certainly would be willing to do that. Uh, Mark and I had a conversation about that yesterday, um, and the, the mid-cycle review is a document I typically share, so I'm gonna do that. Uh, right here.
To tee that up, just briefly, Jim, to interrupt you, um, what Jim and I talked about earlier was sort of, usually there's a part of the process where Lori would say. You know, we do this sort of mid-year check-in and if there's any feedback about. How things are going, where do you want to see energy prioritized in the remaining part of the year, et cetera, we talk about that. We, uh, put that on the agenda specifically and gone through that normal process, I think the thought is. Um, we'll hear from Jim tonight on this and then feedback, either Lori and I have to talk about whether it goes to her or to me. But then we'd kind of, kind of come back with any feedback on that the next meeting. So with that, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mark, yeah, so, so again, what you'll notice is, uh, what I had shared with you and I got on the screen there as well are. Are the goals that were approved, um, back in October, uh, by the school committee and what I've done is put in red. Uh, some of the action items that, um. That we've accomplished or that we're still continuing to, to work through, for instance. Um, you know, uh, the developmental relationships, uh, work and the S E L component. Um, and you'll notice that some of the stuff, uh, was done at the end of last year and, and beginning of this year. Uh, A H S was trained. Everything here is still in progress, we're still on track, uh, to meet the goal. Uh, it, it's one of those goals again that will roll from year to year, uh, as we develop. Um, strategies, uh, and, uh, activities to, to work with our students. So that's, you know, that's where that goal is, the district improvement goal two, again, using lessons from. Uh, Chris Taylor and Des Floyd, but also the L and P audit, uh, that we did. Um, continuing, these first three bullets are, actually the first four are, um. Cause it's on the next page, are ongoing from last year, again, the cares team at Ashland High School, um, working on mindset, language. Uh, professional development, oh, actually it goes to two, cool, didn't know that. Um, and. You'll notice that, um, you know, we're still doing things like community partnerships with, uh, with area and National United and Mike. Mike is, is really integral in that and he, he meets with them on a regular basis. Um, a GoGo's, uh, we've talked about it in the past and, uh, you know, well, we don't necessarily have, um. A tremendous amount of success or haven't had a tremendous amount of success. In terms of our recruitment, we're still using them and, and forwarding to them and working through them with, uh, their platform, posting our jobs. Uh, in their outreach, uh, it'll be interesting to see what their outreach becomes as their platform gets a little bit stronger. Uh, again, I don't know if Mike, if you got it today, there's another email that came out, uh, from them, how they're, they are pushing out. Two districts, uh, job openings, um, so, which is great. Uh, Ashland Middle School Equity Team, uh, has been formed, they've been meeting, um. The handbooks and, uh. Recommendations will be a part of the, um, from the equity audit will be. Part of, uh, student handbooks presented to the school committee, but also, um, the handbooks they're referring to in the equity audit. Were, um, personnel handbooks and making sure our language was appropriate there. Uh, and so we're updating even job postings, uh, as well as, um, job descriptions to, to be. Um, reflective of, of the equity audit. Mike had his first meeting, uh, this week with the, um. Middle school and high school and actually Mendez, actually all three levels, uh, those levels to talk about, uh, math placement. Uh, as you know, that was one of the, um, things out of the equity audit, um, especially at the middle school. Going from Mendez into the middle school placement, but then, uh, throughout the, the structure of the middle school. Uh, and then from middle school into high school. So there's good conversations there.
Jim, can I just add that we also, we're, we're, we're also a part of the teacher diversification, uh, P L C.
Which we didn't add.
Yeah, and I, I should have added that and I, my apologies for not adding it, but, but Chris, Jen Cutler, myself, Pete Regan and Alexa Fuller. Uh, meet with a group monthly to talk about, uh, how we can improve our, our hiring practices for diversity. Uh, and a lot of great things are going to end up coming of that, specifically some of the changes that we're gonna make in terms of our hiring practices.
Oh, and, uh, Mike, just, so they're aware of how that came about through the state?
Yeah, it's, it's just, uh, it was an offering through the state, um, and, you know, districts could choose to become a part of that process. Uh, we, we decided that it was something that is, is very important to us, so we, we applied to be in. And it's a, a monthly meeting with a, a, a group that's led by, um, an, an organization, I cannot think of the exact acronym right now. Um, but it's monthly meetings and we, we talk about problems of practice and, um, they, they push us to get together with our own group. And they have a, a certain workbook that we're utilizing to answer questions and, and will just help us to bring about change. One of the things that we've been talking a lot about is, um, recruitment and retention and, um, incorporating some, some, uh. Exit interviews, um, in the future is something that we've really spent a lot of time talking about to ensure. That, you know, we know, understand why people are choosing to leave if they're choosing to leave.
Uh, goal three was about communication, uh, and, you know, I, I wrote needs improvement, needs improvement are ongoing. Um, so, you know, we're, we're still. Focused on, I think we've made great strides already this year, uh, with, with a number of things, um. I think the last bullet, the implementing and the continuing to improve upon consistent messaging formats through the schools, right? Everyone looks the same, uh, goes out at the same time, well, within the same period of window of time each week. Um, Esmer's been working hard with, um. Uh, Sunday, Mark, Kirsten Brant over at Sunday Marketing, uh, on our logos, uh, information, uh, we'll bring that to you. You know, maybe in a couple of meetings, we, we've. I was gonna share some of it tonight, but I think we'd go down a rabbit hole, uh, with it, uh, it's something that we've been looking at. And shared with our admin team to discuss, um. You know, what the logo, again, we talked about an interim logo, if you will, like a, something that is consistent, we could use right away before we. Finalize all of our, um. Our, our plans in terms of, of, um, redesign, um, and. Uh, the marketing and the logo specifically, uh, we're struggling with that, the clock component, if you will. Um, I think that's fair to say, Mike and Esmer, of, of the logo, um. So we've had a, a number of iterations that, that. Have gone back and forth and the admin team is weighing in on and, and eventually that'll come before the board and, and. Uh, we'll need direction, uh, with that, but there's really good work being done, uh, you're just not seeing it all yet. I think where we need to be better is, um. The, the outreach, I wrote here, needs improvement, grown, expand the reach of social media to inform the public. More about timely, relevant information about our achievements. Um, Mark, you've mentioned that in years past is really an important part of, of, of the communication strategies and. And I think we can do much better with that, we've been focused on other components. Um, but that is something that we need to get better at, I, I think. The, the first L forum was really successful, um, that was a great step in our communication. Uh, survey will be going to them, uh, uh, to that group with another, um, planned night, uh, for April, so, um, which is exciting. The professional practice goal four, uh, is the strategic plan, which you all are integrally involved in. Mike and I have a meeting tomorrow, um. With, with Hazard Young again, uh, to determine the next steps for us, um. And, uh, you know, I'm hoping that we can come to some resolution tomorrow to streamline some of this. Uh, so we have, um, the next couple of meetings with them are really productive in that we can get, uh, a plan. Uh, with some strategic objectives, uh, goals, initiatives, um, to be ready to be. Um, approved by the board by the spring of twenty twenty-three, you can see I've, uh, had to modify that goal, which was February of twenty twenty-three, but, um. Uh, sometimes that happens and I think we've had a good, good conversation, um, and Prem and I spoke last week. And, uh, I think, you know, while we are, are making progress, we have to. Make some more significant progress on this, uh, over the next month or so. And then the last goal is the student learning goal, all deals with the literacy, which Mike went through tonight, um, it's all ongoing, um. I, I don't want to reiterate, that's why he gave that presentation as well, uh, it was part of the district-wide goal. So, so all in all, I guess, as a, as a recap, I, I think we're making significant progress. Um, on all of the goals, I'm not, you know, certainly nothing is, is completed. We are, um. Focused on, uh, the, the logo and the marketing, uh, and the outreach, uh, we're. Continuing our work with Equity, uh, we're continuing the work on the strategic plan, uh, Mike and, and again, as he talked about. Uh, with, with Kate and Pete and, uh, and the entire, um. Faculty and staff at Warren doing tremendous work with the literacy, um, we're making good strides as a district. Um, I, I think there's still going to be some struggles, uh, with our. Conversations with math and out and, and the placements within math and the movements and, and partly. That's because of, of scheduling, uh, and, and I've begun the process of meeting with, um. Next week will be our first meeting because I was out this week with COVID, uh, with the, um. Middle school, uh, we've, we've created a middle school, um, scheduling team. Uh, to review their schedule, uh, which I will be running and, uh, hopefully that will help also with some of the concerns about. Math placement and scheduling, uh, there as well, so.
Jim, just to the point we started with in terms of, um, sort of feedback for you.
Yep.
You said earlier today when we talked that, or emailed that, um, you're out of town at our next meeting.
Yeah, Mike and I are at the national conference. It always happens to be that same, that second meeting in.
All right, then when we talk about the agenda, we can talk about a timeframe for, um, sort of any feedback or, or, uh, concerns people. Well, we'll, we'll talk about that agenda setting, I guess.
Sure.
Um, any just basic questions for Jim on his summary? Okay, not seen any, so we'll move to, uh.
So, but Mark, I want to.
Mark, yeah.
We'll be available, it'll just, we're, we're just gonna be remote, I'm not saying the meeting shouldn't occur.
No, I wasn't saying that, it's a matter of whether we put this on the agenda or not.
I got you, fair enough, okay.
Sorry, Lori, she hasn't.
I was just gonna add, Mark, that, um, just a reminder for everybody and, and then also for Tina, uh, new at this, uh, part of the year. The feedback either needs to not be at all, if, if you don't have any, if you agree with everything that's been presented and you feel that he's on track and you want to just. Send a quick note about that, that's fine, it, I'm just thinking if there's something concerning, the point of this is to, um. Not comment on something that's not one of the actual goals, it's just the progress of the goals and if somebody has something. And it's also so that there are no surprises at the end of the year when we do our evaluation. So all I want to say is that, especially if you're gonna be away, Jim, I mean, if there's something pressing, um, that you want. Jim to, to know, um, that is gonna involve, um, a, a discussion or a pivot or something. Um, please get your comments to me as soon as possible and I can pass them along to Jim. Because if we wait till you get back, Jim, and then do two weeks after that, if, if there is something, I want you to have enough time to. Have the discussions or do the work or whatever needs to be done, outside of that, um, I think if everyone just shoots me two sentences, if that. Um, on track or, you know, I have a, I have a, just a question or concern. Then I can get that information to you sooner rather than later, Jim, and you can have whatever discussions you need to have. Does that sound like a plan?
Good, everybody, okay, all right, thanks, Lori.
Jim, are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah, like you said, I, we're around.
You get nods.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so let's move on, try to wrap up here before the strike, the stroke of midnight. Accept collaborative vote to include the Wayland Public Schools, I think Jim talked about this about this last time.
I did.
And now you just, we just need a vote to approve their, um, participation in the, in the collaborative?
Except collab, correct.
Okay, any discussion on that, is there a motion?
Is there any specific language or?
It just needs to be, um, the Ashland Public Schools, uh, uh, votes to approve. Acceptance of the Wayland Public Schools into the accept collaborative.
So moved.
Second.
Well, in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
An aye for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already did assistant superintendents update, Mike, you don't have anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else, that, that is imperative, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Paul, Warren?
Uh, between January sixth, twenty twenty-two and February, that should be twenty twenty-three. Uh, between January sixth, twenty twenty-three and February second, uh, twenty twenty-three, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature. Pay bills in the amount of nine hundred thousand fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. This includes general fund expenses of five hundred forty thousand dollars, five, sorry, five hundred forty thousand dollars, five hundred seventy-eight. Uh, dollars and, uh, sixty-nine cents revolving expense of three hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Grant expenses of forty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-nine cents and meals, tax expenses of seventy-nine dollars and two cents. I also signed off on three million seven hundred ninety, or thirty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents of payroll.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, minutes from January fifth, twenty twenty-two. Any comments on those minutes?
Twenty twenty-three.
Uh, twenty twenty-three, I read, I read the agenda, yes. Uh, twenty twenty-three. I read the agenda. Yes. Typographical error on, on our agenda. Um,
No.
No. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, all in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Tina?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Lori?
Aye.
An aye for me. Um, gifts and donations, Jim or Mike?
Yes. Uh, PlanAid, three hundred seventy-six dollars eighty-one cents for miscellaneous gifts and donations. Mass Cultural Council, thirteen hundred dollars, DNA modeling for, uh, biology classes at Ashland High School. And Mass Cultural Council, again, six hundred ninety dollars, a reimbursement grant for purchase of drums at Ashland High School for a total of two thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars eighty-one cents.
Can you motion?
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented.
This is our second. Thank you, Tina, Paul.
Hi.
Tina?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
An aye for me. Um, member up D, why don't we go to, why don't we go to Lori first?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thanks.
Paul?
Uh, I'll, I'll start with something that doesn't include Mendez. Uh, over the weekend, I attended a, uh, play, uh, that was a musical that was put on. It was, uh, not school-related, but, uh, it was Mary Poppins and they had two casts, two versions of cast, I should say, and the, the show I went to, uh, almost exclusively. The main lead characters were Ashland students and I can say that they did an amazing job and an amazing job, not just for students, an amazing job. I was really impressed with, uh, with the performance. It was, it was really great. So, um, did that, uh, Mendez related. Uh, lots of things going on, so you've all been invited to our, uh, the SBC, uh, this month is doing a site walk on Saturday and having our, uh, we would normally, you have been alternating, uh, um, in person and virtual. This would be an in-person meeting this month, but we have, uh.
On the coldest day of the month.
Well, luckily, it's, luckily Saturday is getting a little better. It was gonna be really, really cold, but, uh, so a lot going on there. Uh, we awarded the technology contract for the technology. Uh, the furniture bids are due and I believe next week. Uh, we've chosen paint colors, so there's, uh, each pod has their own, uh, color scheme. Uh, we've, what else? Uh, we got going on? It's the, there, there's lots of things going on, lots, it's, it's kind of one of those times where, uh, at the beginning of the project, site clearing was, oh my God, the big changes and, and now we, we go back. You know, if we take a couple of days, we go back and all of a sudden, boom, the, the media center has drywall up and so it's actually a room now. Uh, the, uh, uh, the, the rear pod that's along the spine has, uh, the, you know, they probably all have the, the windows in by this point, but I, I haven't been in a few days, so, uh, the windows are going in, uh, you know, it's, it's really taking shape. So, um, if you have the ability to come on, on Saturday, uh, it's, it's a completely different, uh, building.
Heated, Tina.
Heated?
I, I, I put that in the email. I, I, I made sure that everybody, everybody wasn't, you know, bowing out for that reason.
I can't make it anyways, but that's good.
Yeah, I won't be able to either, Paul. Thank you for the invite.
Yeah, so, uh, I also, uh, we, we took, uh, Pete, uh, Kate, Sarah and Chrissy, Christie, I'm sorry, uh, on a tour last week. And I believe Jenna's taking, uh, her specialists tomorrow. And I'm taking Jen Cutler and Brittany, uh, the fifteenth, uh, on a tour. So they were all very excited.
I took Claudia last week.
Yeah, and, and, and you took Claudia, uh, for a tour last week, so.
Are we gonna have like a Claudia Bennett memorial garden or something? Like, or honorary garden, not memorial garden.
It's like, what happened?
Yeah, that's something out there.
I hope not a memorial one.
We, there should be something for her.
So, uh, so yeah, there's, there's just tons going on, uh, over there. So, and if you can't make it, uh, at any other times that you wanna, uh, a tour, like I said, it's, it's, it's quickly, quickly taking shape and, and and just tons going on. What up? Oh, so other things, uh, we've talked about and so, uh, one of the other things, we're, we're releasing the sign package and part of that conversation, we, we, we've been talking, uh, Mike, myself, uh, Jenna and Jen Cutler have been talking about our bathroom signs, right? And so, uh, depending on, so this is the, the impetus uh, that, that made us start to address this and, and hopefully, uh, what I'm, I'm still working out the logistics of whether we can have the time to, uh, step back and, and do something. What I don't want to do um, is have a unique thing we're doing at Mendez without it being a, a district-wide strategy, right? So, um, and we're talking about the signage for our single occupancy bathrooms and also our gang bathrooms to make sure they're inclusive and, and, uh, so hopefully the, the goal would be to be able to release the rest of the sign package and have a little bit of time to hopefully, you know, figure out the right process to address uh, what we think our bathroom signage should be district-wide. And so that may be a co, a conversation depending on the timing that, that may come here as well. If it's appropriate, we're still figuring that out. This is all, uh, kind of very much. We just met on, I think on Monday, uh, as a group and we're, I have to meet back with the team, with the project team to, to see where we are with, with some of these, uh, some of these options. So that's another thing that, uh, may come before us here. Uh, just, uh, e, either as FYI or, uh, or for a decision or, or something like that, but, um, that's another conversation that's come out of the project as well. So, Jim, Mike, am I forget, forgetting something? I know there's just, there's just tons of things going on right now.
No, no, I think you hit it all. It's, it's really, it's really an amazing process right now. Just every week going, every Friday to look at it. It's crazy.
Thank you, Paul. Tina?
I don't think I have anything to talk more about.
Erin?
I volunteered at KNO last Friday night and just shout out to the PTO for herding cats for four hours.
Yeah, I don't miss that, that era.
But it was fun.
I was gonna just, uh, share two things from, um, high school site council. Um, one is there was a lot of discussion about, um, a product that we committed to funding called, I think I'm getting it, LexiKeep?
LexiKeep, yeah.
LexiKeep, yes.
So that, that's our translation service now and it's an on-demand translation service where we can basically through the internet, um, virtually get somebody literally within a couple of minutes of time. And, and there was just, uh, a lot of gratitude for that service um, and how well it's worked and, and it really has been something that, um, folks really feel good about being able to offer and, and have legitimate professional translation rather than trying to patch together and say, well, let's see if we can pull somebody from down the hall or from wherever. Um, so I want to share that with you. And the other was that, um, that, you know, Kelly talked a bit with the group about, um, a proposal for additional elective courses, which has been something we've talked about at the school committee, at least as long as I've been on this and, and probably longer than that, I'm, so I'm sure. So, um, she's still working on what classes they would be and things like that, but she certainly talked about increasing business offerings as one example. Um, so just a couple of highlights that it's nice, you know, and what we do here has another life and, and actually made a difference somewhere and, um, to see some of the, the sort of goals that we're setting for ourselves being discussed at the building level too. So I wanted to share that.
Actually, I do have an update. I forgot. Sorry, it's late. Um, but, uh, there was an ASHPAC meeting last week that, that I was able to go to and some of the bigger items that were discussed, um, amongst the whole group were, you know, the continuing challenge with hiring ESPs. Um, those are, they're really difficult positions to fill. And so, you know, Brittany, um, of course is at those meetings as well and helped to explain all of the efforts that she's undertaking, um, you know, to do what she can to, A, fill those, oh, vacancies, but also while there's still vacancies, to make sure that those positions that need to be covered are covered. And, um, you know, she's, she's doing a really great job at that. Um, but then the other thing we talked about was MCAS and in terms of helping parents understand what MCAS means. Um, you know, for some parents of students with disabilities, they take alternate forms of MCAS, so kind of understanding what that means, uh, for their own graduation, uh, and, and kind of how that plays out. So we had a, a broader discussion and I think, you know, Brittany may be bringing, um, bringing some of this kind of to a, a broader administrative conversation as well too, in terms of helping all parents understand, what is MCAS? What does it mean? What, when, when does it happen? What does it look like? Um, there were a lot of parents of younger students there who were new to Mendez. It's their first student in Mendez and they, um, you know, felt that it would be really helpful to have some more information on that. So, uh, you know, Brittany was very receptive to the conversation and thinking through how her teams, of course, can talk about it on the IEPP level and what it means for, for those students, but also, you know, how to make sure that all parents understand what MCAS looks like.
Thank you, Tina.
Hey, Mark?
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
So I didn't, I didn't get my superintendent's update. You just glossed over me, but, um.
Well, it's not on the agenda, Mr. Adams.
Perfect. Um, no, I, I'd want to say I'm having lunch with, uh, Senate President Spilka next Friday, uh, myself and, uh, I arranged it, um, with her and three other superintendents. We tried to get together to talk about some of the concerns that we have with regard to funding and things, issues of that nature. So I just wanted to at least.
That's all solved. We, we passed that, right?
We did? Yeah.
So just action items, I think from this meeting, we've got a, next time we've got to, um, come back to the graduation requirement component. Um, and, and then also just, um, follow up with Lori in terms of any feedback from Jim's evaluation discussion. Uh, any other action items that we need to be on? Have people on their mind? Okay. Jim, Lori, anything further from, uh, you or Mike? Hearing none? I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Not for me.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor, Paul? Tina?
Aye.
Erin? And Lori?
Aye.
All right, and aye for me.
Thank you, Mark.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. See you later.